And it is seven o'clock, so I am officially calling the meeting to order. Are we good to go? Thank you. This is September 20th, and this is the regular city council meeting for Minnetrista. I welcome all of you here this evening. If you are here for the public hearing portion regarding the roads, you do not need to sign up. You will have an opportunity to speak. And if you are here for another agenda item, again, you do not need to sign up. I will offer that opportunity. But if there's something that is not on the agenda, you do need to sign up under persons to be heard. So with that, first, I'm going to ask that you join us in pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So with that, I'll start out with a few announcements. First, excuse me, introductions. So first, I'd like to tell you who's all here this evening. So I'm Lisa Whalen, I'm the mayor. And to my left are council members Pam Mortenson, John Chumperland, Ann McGregor, and Kathleen Refkin. And then next to Kathleen is our city, one of our city engineers, Ms. Fausky, Allison Fausky. Then we have Gary Peters, who is our Public Works Superintendent. And then we have our Director of Administration, Ally Palphos. And then sitting in the front row is Adam Gattbo, who is also one of our engineers. To my right, I have our City Administrator, Mike Barone. And then we have Finance Director, Brian Grimm, Community Development Director, David Abel. And next to him, sitting in this evening for our regular attorney, is Andrew Biggerstaff with Kennedy and Graven. And then we have on the end, our Chief of Police, Paul Falls. With that, we'll move to approve the agenda. I have two items that we will be adding. They will be items number, under Business Items, number G, which is a resolution to award the contract for the fence replacement and cord resurfacing at Jennings Cove Park. And 6H, also under Business Items, will be a resolution to award the contract for the site work at Jennings Cove Park. Other than that, the agenda stands as printed. Is there a motion to approve the agenda with those two additions?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
I think Ms. Mortenson beats you. So Ms. Mortenson, seconded that. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. This evening, we have a couple of special guests. We've not, no special presentations, just a couple of special guests. Some students from Mayor Luther. So welcome for coming this evening. I hope you learn a lot. Come again. And then we'll move on to persons to be heard. We have Steve Decoleus. I believe I'll take you under our water infrastructure discussion. Is that okay, Mr. Decoleus?
Can you let me speak for three minutes?
Yes, I will. Is that okay? All right. And then we have Bill Udsath?
Bill Udsath.
Udsath, okay. So you're gonna have to come to the DS or podium. Please state your name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes to address the council. And then we won't be taking any action this evening. We generally don't under persons to be heard, but we may direct it to staff and bring it back at a future council. Thank you.
I'm Bill Udsath, 25 Highland Road. Mayor, council members. Thank you for hearing me on the matter of maintenance of East Highland Road. I'm here with my wife, Mary, neighbors Reese Jones and John Sandler. All of us, plus other neighbors, are directly affected by the issue of maintenance of this road. Highland Road has a spur that's about one quarter mile long off it as Highland turns to the north to go to the Public Lake Access. The Public Lake Access is on the south shore of Whale Tail Lake. In 1976, the landowners affected granted an easement, oh, an easement for road purposes forever to the city of Minnetrista over 1,109 feet of East Highland Road. The easement is 66 feet wide and runs directly to the east of Highland Road. No maintenance clause is included in the easement conveyance document. As you are likely aware, an easement, legal ease, easements of this nature, the holder of the easement is referred to as the dominant tenement. The lands over which the easement runs are referred to as the servient tenements. The dominant tenement gets the benefit of the easement. The servient tenements get the burden. The lands, our lands, all of us are burdened by the easement because the city, of course, had a permanent road easement and can come in at any time and do road projects on it. So any work that any of us had done would be subject to the city deciding to do that. Is, the general rule of law, in a case like this, is that in the absence of an express maintenance agreement between the parties, and there is none in the document conveying the easement, the dominant tenement owner has a legal duty to maintain the easement. So the city of Minnetrista has a legal duty to maintain this easement. Alfred Gale put the road in about 1970. So the road was there when the city took the easement. I have corresponded with Mr. Bailey of the City Attorney's Office, and he has said that since the city did not put the road in, they need not maintain it. With respect to the attorney's position, Mr. Bailey is seeking an exception that is not in the general rule of law. He is also trying to add a condition that is not found in the original conveyance document. So we disagree. We are seeking to have the city, as needed, fill potables, grade the road, clear obstructions, maintain the shoulders and the ditches, and make a reasonable pond arrangement with the persons affected. The road is not as wide as the main part of Highland Road, so it would be good to discuss that with the landowners. All these things we are seeking have been done by the landowners for years, but it's time for the city to maintain its own easement. I have copies of relevant documents if anyone wishes to see them. If there are any questions, I'll try to answer them. Otherwise, I'll deal with all of you.
Thank you. Just one question. How many landowners are on this easement? Do you know?
Yes, there's four of us.
Four of us, okay. As I stated before, we don't take any action tonight, and the council can give direction. And obviously, we're gonna have to have our attorney weigh in and have some discussion about it. So it will have to be at a future council meeting. Are we interested in taking a look at this?
Yes.
Yeah, so there you go. We will take a look at this. I can't give you a date because Andrew Biggerstaff is sitting in for our regular attorney, so we'd have to kind of, and talk to staff to see when we could put it on the docket. Could you, whenever that might be, it might take a while, maybe a month? I mean...
I have no way of answering that. But we could certainly let Mr. Udsath know when it's going to show up.
So...
Or if he's okay with that.
We have your contact information, I assume? Okay, good. And then you'll be contacted and let your neighbors know when we'll have that discussion.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. I didn't see anybody else signed up under persons to be heard. Everybody else here then for the public hearing and the Jennings Cove project, I'm assuming. And we'll move on then. Consent agenda items, are there any you wish to remove? Okay. Otherwise, we have consent agenda items. A is a resolution to approve our 134, resolution 134, to approve claims. B is approve our work session meeting minutes from August 16th, 2021. C is approve our city council regular meeting minutes from August 16th, 2021. D is a resolution to approve status change from probationary employee status to full-time employee status, an increase for Darcy Atkinson and our customer service communications assistant. E is a resolution to approve our CUP amendment for Buddy Boy Fine Barbecue at 8175 State Highway 7. And F is Woodland Cove 6th Edition, 4340 Lotus Drive. I is an ordinance number 469, rezoning 4340 Lotus Drive to a PUD. Two is a resolution to authorize publication of ordinance number 469 by title and summary. And three is a resolution to approve preliminary plat for Woodland Cove 6th Edition. And then consent agenda item G is a resolution to approve the MSA Street Improvement Request for State Aid Variance, which I think is really ridiculous, but anyhow. Is there a motion to approve consent agenda items A, B, C, D, E, F, and G? And it would be F1, F2, and F3 as well.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Chumperland. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Mortenson. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye. Aye. All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. So we'll move on to our public hearings. This is our street improvement project. It's a project 2020, and it consists of Jennings, the Jennings Cove neighborhood. Should I open the public hearing, or should we do the presentation first?
Madam Mayor, you can take the presentation first if you'd like, and then ask questions, and then take comment after that if you prefer.
Okay. Let's do the presentation. Thank you, Adam.
Just noted, you guys are taking a swap there. It gets annoying calls out there.
Thanks. Thanks for joining. I can't see him from here.
All right. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'm Adam Gattbo with WSB.
Do we need to check all of ours?
I think the rest is very good.
All right, all right.
All right, so in your packet this evening is a business item, and I'll just touch on a couple items there, and then we'll jump into the presentation. PowerPoint, the projector is out tonight, so I'll do my best to paint the picture of the presentation, but walk through all the slides here, and then as Mr. Biggerstaff mentioned, then we can go on to the public hearing. So as required by Minnesota State Statute, Chapter 429, in order to move forward with the 2022 Street Improvement Project, City Project 01-22, we need a hold of public hearing. So this project was initiated back in June, June 21st, at the regular city council meeting. A feasibility report was prepared, and in that report, it discussed the, what's contained within the 2022 Street Improvement Project. So it's in the Jennings Cove neighborhood. Full-depth pavement removal and replacement. Partial replacement of the deficient concrete curb and gutter that exists out there today. Enhancements to the stormwater infrastructure, as well as the sanitary sewer infrastructure. No water main in the neighborhood, so no improvements to any water main. There was a neighborhood meeting for residents on June 7th, where we talked about the project with the residents in attendance there. And then we went forward and produced this feasibility report that was accepted at the August 16th, 2021 regular city council meeting. That night, we also called the public hearing to be held tonight. So jumping into the presentation, which I've got here printed, I'll talk a little bit about the project background. The streets included here are Jennings Cove Road, East Cove Lane, Upper Cove Road, West Cove Lane, and Cove Circle. These are streets just south of County Road 151. So these projects come about through the Capital Improvement Plan, which is acronym is CIP. And what that focuses on is improving the streets within the city. So first and foremost, we evaluate the streets based on the pavement condition, and that helps us hone in on the locations for these projects. And then we do some data collection, look at the underlying utilities. We look at isolated drainage issues, have a meeting with the neighbors, gather input from the residents that actually live in these neighborhoods, and then go forward with feasibility report. And then, of course, tonight, we're here at the public hearing. So for the residents that are here this evening, you're aware of kind of the existing conditions out there. First and foremost, the pavement's deteriorated. It's got an average PCI of 52 from four years ago. And basically, what that means on a scale of 100, it's in pretty poor shape and requires some improvements. There's also a lot of water in the boulevards there, and so we've got infiltration at the curb line, which residents can see as the drive-through. And then these areas of the curb that's actually holding water that we want to address. The sanitary sewer is in really pretty good condition. We're gonna address some of the castings that are within the roadway, within the pavement section. And the storm sewer has been televised and reviewed. It's actually in really good condition as well. So the pavement's going to be removed and replaced. And so, different from previous year's projects, it's not a full-depth reclamation project where the pavement and the underlying aggregate are blended together. This one is just the middle of the existing pavement. It's got a good gravel section underneath. So the work is a little less rigorous when it comes to actually repairing that pavement section. We have concrete curbing that are on both sides of the street, which is different from some of the previous year's projects. And basically, what that means is there's gonna be no change to the street widths. There won't be any change really to the street grades because we're kind of confined by that existing curbing gutter. But there is some curbing gutter that has been inspected that, like I mentioned, is in poor shape. And so we'll make sure to replace that curbing gutter as necessary, which is usually just eight to 10-foot panels at a time. Sometimes there's longer segments that need to be replaced. Any areas of residence yards that are impacted would be, would get sod to restore the turf. And then, as I mentioned, some very minor storm and sewer improvements. I think on the agenda tonight, it was added about the park. So we'll talk a little bit more about that later this evening. That's a separate project. It is kind of occurring within the same timeframe. There is a patoomis trail. Residents are calling it a trail, might be a parking area. I don't know if it's quite sure where it came from, but we did hear from the residents. That's gonna go back in as part of the street project. And it just makes sense to bid that with the street project because of the paving that'll be occurring in the street. So we'd like to discuss the assessment policy that the city of Minnetrista has, which guides the council on how portions of the project costs can be funded. The assessment policy states that project costs associated with the surface improvements and storm sewer can be assessed at 50%. So as I mentioned, there's gonna be some work on sanitary sewer. There's some work on the, that trail, as I mentioned. Those are not assessed. It's just the roadway improvements and then the stormwater improvements. So every parcel in the neighborhood will be assessed at a unit basis, so they're all gonna receive the same assessment. The policy also discusses hardship deferrals for senior citizens, disabled persons, or members of the National Guard or military services. And if there are any residents in attendance who are listening to this that have further questions about deferral, we can answer those, myself and the finance director, Mr. Grimm. Typically, these assessments are levy over a 20-year period. As we move forward with the project, we'll hone in on that timeframe and as well as the interest rate. We'll discuss that further. So in order to determine the preliminary assessment amount, which I'll mention shortly, we go through this feasibility report process, go through preliminary design. We also take a topographic survey of the neighborhood. We take all that data together and do a preliminary design and calculate detailed projected construction costs. We use that factor of 50% for the surface and storm, and then look at the number of units that are gonna be assessed and due costs. This is a preliminary figure presented in the feasibility report and discussed tonight. The final assessment amount is kind of dependent on what the bid results are that the city receives when it's competitively bid in February. The assessment hearing will be on March 7th, and residents who are impacted will receive the notification as required by state statute. So I'll talk about the project, projected costs and financing. The total surface improvements are projected to cost $637,700. The storm sewer improvements are projected to cost $25,320. The sanitary improvements, which as I mentioned are not assessable, are projected to cost $31,550. And then the trail and some drains on improvements. To help with that drainage, it was discussed, it's projected to cost $33,460 for a total project cost of $728,030. There are 40 units presented in the feasibility report to be assessed, and that works out to be $8,287 per unit. And that number's rounded down just to even out the sense that is directed on previous projects. So tonight, we're at the public hearing, and the council will consider ordering the project. If the council orders the project, we'll move right into final design. We'll be going on the detailed plans and specifications in project manual to be bid in January. And then the project will be considered for acceptance and awarded with a contract in February, or an assessment hearing in March. Or we'll order the assessment hearing in March, have the assessment hearing in April, and begin construction early June. With this size of neighborhood, we expect to have substantial completion in the all the paving and getting to the restoration by September. I'll take any questions on the project itself. For those, we can go right into public hearing.
Yeah, what I'll do, council, any questions? I know we've gone over this a number of times. Maybe what I'll do is, I'm gonna open the public hearing, and they can ask their questions at that time. So at this time, I'll just open the public hearing. So with my gavel, I am opening the public hearing. If anybody is here this evening that has questions or comments, please, y'all, just come to the platform, state your name and address, and we will try to answer your questions for you. And don't be shy. Is there anybody over here? Okay.
Hi there. My name is Pete Galman. I live at 1115 Cove Circle in Jennings Cove. And I'm also the current Homewares Association president.
Hi. I think we've talked.
Yes.
Thank you.
So my question, I have a number of questions, but I'm realizing through the presentation that they can be addressed by Mr. Grimm, and then at a later date probably. And then, just questions about the assessments as well. My question right now is with regard to the gutter work that's gonna be done. I understand that it's not, the entirety of the gutter system there is going to be redone. Do you have an estimation, I guess, and I'm addressing you, percentage-wise, what we're looking at as far as how much of that gutter system's gonna be replaced?
Yeah, I would say that it's less than 40%.
Less than 40%.
And there is maybe the point that you're getting to, kind of a tipping point, but where it makes more sense to replace it all. And I'd say about 50 to 60%.
Oh, okay. All right. Yeah, 'cause I guess my concern is, you know, aesthetically, how it'll all come together. What is that said of the, you know, let's say that the number stays at 40% that gets redone? The 60%, that's the original, 30-year-old stuff with weeds growing through it and all that? Does that get, not refurbished is the right word, does it get, you know, improved in any way? Is there, is there a, you know, enhancement that can be done to it?
Coating.
Power washing, anything, you know? To make it not look very much familiar with the word janky?
Sure. No, you could. There would be probably no structural better enhancement to the life of that curb. But when the curb is installed, the new curb, you cure it with a white curing compound, and that makes it look very channeling white. Theoretically, that could be applied to the existing curb. This methodology is used a lot on these types of projects where it's not a full reconstructing of the neighborhood, just to save on cost. And so it might not be aesthetically the best outcome, but it is getting the water off the road and carrying it through the lettering of the system. So in terms of a good constructed road that's gonna last, that's the, that's the outcome. You know, the aesthetics of the old curb next to the new curb will be just personal preference, I guess.
Okay. One final question, then. The center median at the front of the neighborhood, is that included in your scope work?
Yeah, it is. And on both ends, as you know, it's kind of busted up from the block. Yeah, so we're revising both ends of those so that it follows a mid-point median design. So follow it right up and over instead of smacking it. So both ends of that median's gonna be perfectly replaced.
Okay.
And you're getting your trail?
Yes, we're keeping our trail.
You're keeping your trail, yes. All right. Anybody else on this side? Okay, I'm gonna move to this side. Anybody here wishing to make a comment? All right. So my question, so I'm gonna then close the public hearing and take it back to staff and council. Just a real quick question then, Adam. So are you saying you can or can't color the existing curbing to kind of make it all blend in? I'm just asking.
You can do it.
Is it expensive?
I have never done it on my projects. It can be done, like I mentioned. We're hearing the new curb with this white curing compound. So in theory, you could do that on all the curb.
Or could you cure the new curb with a little lesser bright white, so it blends with the old?
A lot more companies are using clear. We use that for what we're doing for our stuff. We use more of a clear, so you don't get that bright white notice.
Yeah.
So you can, you, we could spec a clear sealant on it too, which will help. You'll still have a little color variant.
A little, but not as drastic.
Not as standout-ish, or you wanna phrase it, but yeah, won't stand out as a sore thumb.
That would be a better method.
Yes, I think that would be good. I mean, we wanna make our neighborhoods look nice. And if that helps a bit, let's do that.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Okay. That's the only question.
We just did almost 600 feet of curb in-house at Landy's Drive and Games Drive in Hunter's Crest, if you're interested, take a look at too what that looks like, so.
Okay, great. Thank you, Gary. Good, good idea. That's all I have. Counsel, any questions? All right, thank you. Nice presentation.
Thanks, I just have one comment on the resolution, and you guys are about to consider note one. The, the street project name, should we change to 2022 in the resolution?
Okay, in here on our agenda item, it says 2022 Street Improvement Project.
The resolution.
The resolution needs to be changed, yeah.
I'll change it.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So that takes us to the item that Adam mentioned, a resolution ordering improvements and authorizing preparation of plans and specifications for the 2022 Street Improvement Project, City Project 01-22. If there are no further questions or comments, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Chumperland. Any further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye. Aye. All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. I believe that concludes that segment. We'll move on to our next business item, which is our budget process and approvals. Mr. Grimm?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor and council. And we had a good discussion at the beginning of the work session here earlier this evening. And this, the agenda items, there'll be three of them that we'll be taking action on. Start on page 127 of your packet. And the preliminary option, levy option that was presented and then talked about as what sort of the consensus the council came to is a gross levy amount of $5,375,433. Basically, once our fiscal disparities are calculated in, it will be a net levy increase of about $273,602, or about a 5.53% increase. Obviously, roads are a big factor in that, if we just talked about a road project here. So that's one of the biggest priorities, and we're upping our roads levy from the proposed initial 825,000 to 875,000. So that's where some of the additional dollars are coming into play. The resolution to adopt this levy needs to be sent to the county by September 30th, so that's why we are acting on that tonight. And the resolution is included on the packet on page 128 with the updated number of $5,375,433 for a proposed 2021 tax levy collectible in 2022. The preliminary levy, which sets the maximum amount, and obviously, the public comment notices will go out in November. And later in the meeting here, we'll be setting our public comment dates. So turn it over to council for any further discussion on the preliminary levy.
Thank you. Yeah, we discussed this at the work session. Counsel, any comments, questions? Just kind of FYI, so we had about, so right now, and this is one of the things the council discussed at the work session, that it's... the council discussed at the work session, that it's being proposed at a five point...
Five three.
Five three percent increase. And we're still gonna look at ways to maybe reduce it. We actually raised it just a little bit more to add a little more funding into our road levy, our road fund. However, we're gonna be taking a look at that at our upcoming meetings. It may go down. And the other thing that we considered is our new home growth in Minutrista. We had about a three and a half percent new homes that were added in value to our city. And that really will then reduce the total, even if we kept it at five point three. It'll reduce it by that much, so it'll be just under two percent if we keep it at that amount. So just kind of FYI. We discussed a lot of things, CIP, and we'll also be discussing some other CIPs and road projects and that in our upcoming meetings before the final levy is adopted in December. Any other comments? Okay, so we have to make a number of decisions here. So we need to approve the twenty twenty-two preliminary tax levy, as Mr. Grimm stated, five million, three hundred and seventy-five thousand, four hundred and thirty-three dollars. Is there a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Okay, Ms. McGregor made that motion, and Mr. Trumperland seconded that. Thank you. Any further questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. Then we have a resolution to approve the debt levy at a hundred percent of the twenty twenty-two bond payments.
Correct. And this is on page one thirty-two and one thirty-three in the packet. And basically, it's an annual resolution we've been doing for a number of years here that per statute, municipalities may levy up to a hundred and five percent of the next year's debt payments, just based on to guard against delinquencies. And basically, that's the main reason. But we've had historically a really good collection rate of our property taxes in the city of Minutrista. So we adopted usually the levy at a hundred percent of the bond payments. But we need to just do the official resolution for that. And a note there that basically by adopting the a hundred percent versus the a hundred and five, it reduces the debt levy by about thirty-seven thousand, so a special levy.
The amount that we levy, yeah.
Yep, yep.
Right, okay. Council, any questions? Okay, then is there a motion to approve the debt levy at a hundred percent for the twenty twenty-two bond payments?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Ms. Mortensen made that second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye. Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. So next, we move on to approving the date for the public comments on the twenty twenty-two levy and budget. And that will be December sixth, I believe, at seven o'clock or shortly thereafter at the seven o'clock meeting. Is there a motion to approve that date? Any comments?
No, that's pretty much our one meeting in December, and it needs to be held pretty much after Thanksgiving, or it is per statute. So that's the date in time, December sixth at seven PM, like you said.
Okay. So motion to approve December sixth as our public comment date. Thank you, Ms. McGregor. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin. And any further comments or questions? Hearing none then. All those in favor signify with aye. Aye. Motion passes. And opposed, hearing none, motion passes five oh. All right, so next, we're looking at awarding a quote for the installation of our new SCADA system upgrades. Mr. Peters?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor and council. The issue we have before us here on this, tonight, is the master remote telemetry units that are located in the Sunnyfield Tower, the Kings Point Tower, whilst one and three are getting to be twenty-five years old, they are obsolete not supported. This is the heart of the communication system for our SCADA system, which is our supervisory control data acquisition. This is the system that monitors what goes on, sends out alarms when we have issues, either at the well, water treatment plants, or any of the twenty-two lift stations that we have in town. To give you a little history, the whole system was upgraded in two thousand and fourteen. It was awarded and performed by Automatic Systems back in the day. And they modified the existing lift stations, wells, and towers at that point to accommodate just new radio communication equipment. We got away from the cellular dial-up and went to a radio communication, stepped up a little bit, communication system-wise. The equipment for the new, was new for the radio transfers and receivers, but all the original equipment was left there as a money-saving system. Everything was kind of retrofitted into the cabinets that were there. If you'll notice, the lift stations were on, you'll see that they've got a box attached to them. That's the communications box, where everything had to get put inside, 'cause there was not enough room. We became aware of an issue here back July. We were getting a lot of communication failures. A lot of them were just, it would come through as a communication fail from like lift six, lift four. And they were intermittent from different areas. And we couldn't figure it out. We had Automatic Systems come out and look at it. And what we're running into is, our system is getting to the point where it's starting to fail. What we're looking at here is we had them come out, kind of walk through everything, and look at what we had. And that's where we're finding out a lot of these things are from like nineteen ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, when it was originally kind of put into service through an old system. We met with them, we walked through the entire sites, all, we went through all the sites. We went through all the water treatment plants, all the well houses, and a lot of the lift stations to see what we're looking at for needs. It was a four-hour kind of a tour, if you would. What they found is some of the system is pretty old, some of the communication cards we have in there, you can't get anymore. If you're lucky to get one, I think it was one of the smaller cities up north, I believe it was Baxter, I think they said it was, needed one. And it was five to six thousand dollars if they could find one, just these cards, that you can be replaced with a, you know, with a pretty easy, cheap circuit board, so. But we went and toured with them, we wanted an update on everything. Found a number of issues with more obsolete equipment, internal panel space constraints, and a lot of cybersecurity concerns with everything that's happening. Our system is not that safe with being the old system. It is technically, you know, open to, you know, problems down the road if we want. The old radio receivers and transmitters that were put in two thousand and fourteen are still viable. They're still good. It's the operating system behind them that's the issue. So we went through and wanted to do everything. Everything's in here. I'm just gonna give a brief update. I'm not gonna go through everything, 'cause you guys are running away for questions. But the Sunnyfield Tower would be to upgrade the remote telemetry unit there, and that's the communication system. It would be also then at the Kings Point Tower to upgrade the master there. What that means is everything on the north end goes to the Sunnyfield Tower. For the Sunnyfield Tower, it's relayed to the Kings Point Tower. For the Kings Point Tower, it comes back to us here. It's, yeah, Public Works here. So that is the two main hubs. Everything else also has. So well three, right now, is, doesn't even communicate. We have no communication with that whatsoever. It is, it is a very old system on there. And right now, to do anything on that, we have to go to the treatment plant, see what's happening, go to well three, make modifications, drive back over to the new water treatment plant to make sure that everything is working. With this new system, we would have the control panel there that would communicate back and forth, so you gotta eliminate that need to go back and forth. Well one would also get an upgrade. This is our main well on the north side, same thing. We would have it so that you could actually make control changes in the well halls there and see what's happening at the plant and vice versa, so you don't have to walk back and forth. The biggest one here is the VPN firewall. It's the remote access upgrade, which is gonna be our cybersecurity for doing handheld, either through a phone or our iPads. It's an upgraded, what they call a, trying to think, a two-face or two-authification system to get into it, makes it a little harder to hack. But what we can do is if there is a trouble at one of the water plants, say we're over, like it would happen at North Florida, say all of a sudden chlorine is pumping in too much, we can get on an iPad, I can get on my, I can get on the phone. We can shut that system down from there, then we can go to the plant, take care of it. Right now, we would find the alarm, but we'd have to drive all the way in. So your valuable time, you know, would be gained here, because you could shut something down that was bad. The SCADA computer hardware would be upgraded at this time to the, to an upgraded program, Windows seven and all that, 'cause the computers right now, I had both plants are obsolete. We did last year upgrade our main hub here for a computer, but we did not do the other two at that point. The other thing that we would actually love to have is the discharge pressure transducers at both water treatment plants. What this is gonna entail is, when we had the tower out of service, we could not run our water treatment plant because of the issue of keeping pressure in the system. When the system goes into a backwash, so the filters have to get cleaned, the high-service pumps get taken out of service. Without a tower keeping our pressure, once that high-service pump would go, you'd lose pressure in the system. People would turn on their tap and it'd have no water. What this would do is it'd allow the pumps to maintain pressure, monitoring that while it's backwashing. So instead of trying to shut the plant down and do it all, we can now do it in one whole step, which would be really nice. So not so much for the north tower anymore, but for when we have to take the south tower out of commission to redo that in twenty twenty-three, most likely. Yes, we have the backup tower, but this will help keep the plant running and keep system pressure. And that's the biggest thing. We wanna keep that pressure going. The price tag is not cheap on any of this stuff, but with technology and all that, it's a hundred and sixty-eight thousand, eight hundred and five dollars for everything. Talking with Brian, since this does monitor both sewer and water, we could take it out, half out of each font of eighty-four thousand, four hundred and two dollars and fifty cents. So what I'm asking for is a motion to award a contract with Automatic Systems, who is our SCADA upgrade integrator, for the purchase installation of the new SCADA upgrades listed in the contract here, and for cybersecurity at a total of one hundred and sixty-eight thousand, eight hundred and five dollars. Now I'll open up to any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Peters. Council, questions?
Yeah, so it sounds, from what you described, that we're playing catch-up. And so how long will we have before we have to upgrade again?
It's hard to say. I mean, computers go obsolete. I mean, we're talking probably maybe four to five years that we'd have to look at upgrading. But most of it will be, I think now, once we get the stuff in place, it would be more software upgrades. You know, I mean, hardware, I mean, this hardware's been lasting now, you know, what we have has been since roughly nineteen ninety-five. So we're hoping this hardware will last. I mean, the radio, the radio receivers and transmitters in there are properly functioning. I mean, there's not much to that. It'll all be, you know, getting away from basically the, kind of the old card system and tubes that we got in there, so, you know, back basically to a new upgraded, you know, computerized system. So I mean, I'm hoping to get, you know, maybe ten years down the road before we have to do some serious upgrades again.
Will the new tower on seven work with all this?
Yes, yep, that is already in there. They will have, Automatic Systems already has everything to set to go on that tower, and that'll be monitored, everything there too.
Gary, is there any, so this is a hundred and sixty-eight thousand plus, and how does this fall under the requirements to go out for open bids?
That's a good question. We have, our integrator is Automatic Systems. And they have done everything for us. They know our system like the back of their hand to go out to something like that. And I don't know how that works, and maybe Brian knows what. I mean, it's one of those things where you hate to have somebody come in and start to, you know, go through, 'cause it's, the software that they're having is, you know, it's a Win-911, and it's that.
Gary, I understand that. I'm just, no, I understand that. And I see the rationale for this, but I'm just saying, from a legal standpoint, what is the city's obligation? And what do we have to do legally?
Yeah, mayor members of the council, the public bidding, the competitive bidding rules don't kick in until the contract is expected to be a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars or more. So contracts between twenty-five thousand and a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars can be made by direct negotiation.
Okay.
But do require two quotes to be obtained. There are some caveats for specialized equipment like this. And I'm familiar with SCADA systems generally, but I'm not positive whether these would fall in there. But we can certainly confirm that before a contract is entered into. And if we do need to obtain another quotation, we could come back and...
Okay, I just wanna make sure that we enter into whichever contract legally. And I knew that there's some caps on them, so too, so. Yeah, you'd have, if you can check on that before we enter the contract, that would be appreciated. Okay? Otherwise, are you okay with doing this with the caveat, should it be...
I guess the question reached, should it maybe be tabled until we can get that authored? I had the same question, I think it didn't get answered, as far as whether it's for, you know, enough of a professional service or technology, or whether it would fall under, you know, like obviously, we just talked about a street project, that's for sure, you know, professional, or a construction type, you know, where this is more of a potentially professional services slash technologies. So I think we should get that...
That's fine, we can bring it back if, unless we're under some kind of time constraint.
No, we're not. I mean, I say, we've waited, you know, kind of now, till, you know, we can get the information that we need.
Well, then, let's bring it back at our October first, I think it's October fourth meeting, if we can do that. All right, thank you. So then, with that, we'll move on to approve a conditional offer of employment for Spencer, is it?
Cook.
Cook, okay, as a new police officer.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor and council. Advertising for two police officer positions began on June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one. As mentioned in a previous council meeting, the hiring process was conducted a bit differently, and the position remained open until filled. The position had its final closing date on August twentieth, and Spencer Cook emerged as the final candidate for the second police officer position. At tonight's council meeting, we're asking that the city council approve this conditional offer of employment contingent upon Mr. Cook successfully completing a background investigation, psych evaluation, and physical exam. Spencer attended Minnesota State University Mankato and received his bachelor's degree in law enforcement. He recently attended the skills program at Heming Community College. Due to his experience and qualifications, the personnel committee recommends entering Mr. Cook into Level One of the LELS Police Officer Union PACE schedule. With that, we ask for your approval of this full offer of employment and expect Mr. Cook to join our staff in the upcoming weeks.
Thank you. Questions, council? We've had a vacancy, now two vacancies for a while, so it'll be nice to get a full force again, so. With that, and we're very fortunate to have two good candidates too. So thank you, Chief, for your time and involvement in that, as well as Ellie and Mr. Veroni, and looking forward to having them on board. With that, is there a motion to approve the conditional offer for Spencer Cock? I would say Cock.
Cook.
All right, as a police officer.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Refkin seconded that. So Ms. Mortensen made that motion, and Ms. Refkin seconded that. All those in favor signify with aye. Aye. All those opposed, motion passes five oh. So next, we're gonna move on to our feasibility report, and I'm sure that's why you're all here. What we're gonna do is we're gonna make the presentation first, and then Steve, I think it is. Then you can come forward and make your comments and ask your questions at that time. Is that okay?
Prefer to do that after the presentation.
Right, that's what I said, yep. And then anybody else that would have questions or comments, you're welcome to do that at that time. So we're gonna start with Ms. Fosky.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. In the packet this evening, you'll find the feasibility study prepared by WSB for the water supply and treatment expansion in the south system. Greg Johnson from our Water Waste Water Group, he's here this evening to do the presentation, as it was his group, under his direction, that prepared the document. And as Mr. Johnson is getting ready to come up here, I thought it would be a good idea to give the council a little bit of information about Mr. Johnson and his experience with these types of facilities, so that the council can have some comfort level in knowing that WSB certainly has the expertise to do some of this work under Greg's direction. So Greg's experience spans almost three decades, I believe. And in fact, I first encountered Mr. Johnson when I was in the public sector. He did both of Chan-Hasten's water treatment plants when I was at the city of Chan-Hasten. So I was familiar with his work. I didn't work with him directly, but particularly with the second water treatment plant, the West Water Treatment Plant, it was, it was actually nominated for a federal award for, I believe it's Public Works Association. So it was a, it was a good water treatment plant, both aesthetically and functionally. Greg's resume includes, I believe, eighteen water treatment plant constructions, and then throughout, throughout the metro and actually throughout the state, with a variety of different... with a variety of different filter types. And I think that's one of the things that, um, when we start looking at Minutrista System, to understand that Greg has, um, experience with multiple types of, there's biofilters, sand filters, um, Greg's got, um, some good experience with different filter types as well. Um, and in addition to new water treatment plants, he does do upgrades as well. So he's got some, um, experience with looking at existing treatment plants and, and what can be done with those. So, um, I know Greg has been a, a good resource for Superintendent Peters and his group as questions have come up, um, with the technical components of the existing system. Um, Greg's always been a phone call away to, to Siskiyou and is familiar with the city system. So, um, with that, I will turn it over to Greg as he has the, the experience, um, in preparation of this feasibility report to provide to the council and, um, the attendees this evening.
Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Johnson.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. It's good to be here today. And I did have a PowerPoint put together, but I understand the projector is always nice.
Yes.
So I, I've got a copy of my own PowerPoint, just kind of try to go through it and I just, you know, just try to go page by page, if you just follow along.
Okay.
Feel free to ask questions as we go through this too. And, um, so the purpose of this feasibility study, um, that we prepared was to look at options to provide more treatment and supply capacity for the saltwater system. So for the outline that we put together, uh, just to kind of jump right into the report, uh, we looked at, uh, uh, the options evaluated. There were four options. Um, uh, the recommended option, the opinion on probable cost for, for the options, and propose schedule. So the next slide is titled Options Considered. Uh, we had four options. The first one was to construct new wells without treatment. So basically, basically we would, uh, construct additional wells that would pump directly into the distribution system. And, uh, it, it would still be treated, but they wouldn't be filtered. To just to clarify that. And then the second option was to expand the existing saltwater treatment plant with, with additional capacity. And then the third option was to implement, uh, treatment for existing wells number three and four. And then the fourth option is to construct new wells with a new treatment plant. So just to start off with the, each of the options, so option number one, which is the new wells without treatment, uh, we put together on the slides the advantages and the disadvantages. And the advantages of the new wells without treatment is that there would be a cost savings not to build a water treatment plant and the raw water main that's associated with that. The disadvantage of that option is that we know from experience that the primary aquifer down here is the Tunnel City Water Lock Formation. And we know historically that aquifer has high levels of iron and manganese. So it's most likely, you know, if we continue utilizing that aquifer, um, we're going to have iron, iron and manganese that's going to be, become an issue. The, the deeper mound, Simon Pinkley Aquifer, which is the deepest aquifer in the Twin Cities, which is also one of your, one of our fours, where they roll in the mountains technically. And there is a moratorium by the DNR to use that one in the Twin Cities. And the only time it's allowed is when there's a, no feasible treatment options. It just so happens that that well number fours, fours, my grandfather did. Because that's why the city continues again. The other issue with the Mount Simon Aquifer is that that well commonly produces high concentrations of radium, natural radiums in the water. So instead of dealing with iron and manganese, you're dealing with a primary contaminant that, that actually has an enforced hold of it. So. Uh, option two is to expand the existing saltwater treatment plant. And that plant is, uh, was constructed over the, right next to the Kings Point Water Tower. And it is a really tight site, and you know, there, there's a channeling fence that goes around it. And there's wetlands behind it on top of that. And so the advantages of expanding the water plant is that the, you know, you already have treatment, so you locate that site. The disadvantage of that is that the existing plant cannot produce any more water than, than it currently is. And.
Filtered, filtered water.
Filtered water.
Thank you.
Yep. So the only way you can increase the capacity of that plant is to actually build onto it. But the, the problem there is that is we've got wetlands, united plants, and the existing facilities would have to be upsized, the water main, the sewer, the electrical service. And then also that you've got wells six and seven in that area, so if you're at, you know, the, the goal is to find your wells as close to the water plants as possible so that water doesn't have to pump as far. And so because you already have wells six and seven down there, constructing more wells in that area will probably interfere with the performance of six and seven. So then option three was to provide treatment for existing wells three and four. And, uh, well three is by the gene letter part. And so the advantage of option three is that, that, um, you've got existing wells that are already there, you wouldn't have to construct additional wells. The disadvantage is that you're picking up part space by constructing a, a plant at that site. And then also the other challenge is those two wells are developed in a different aquifer, so that number three is a Tunnel City Water Lock Well. And one of our four is a Mount Simon Aquifer. So you'd be basically mixing water from different aquifers of different quality to treat it, and it's been done before, um, it's just not preferred.
But you already said that the Simon, Mount Simon potentially has the, is it radium?
It's got radium, yeah. And the, the good thing about radium is that you can treat it with conventional iron and manganese filtration.
Yeah.
So if you use a green sand filter, you can, you can take out radium.
Mm-hmm.
Yep. And then again, the disadvantage is to give, give back to your point is that that well number four does have radium, so it's another contaminant that we have to deal with in addition to iron and manganese.
Are there also, um, amounts from the Mount Simon that you are allowed to pump out?
Yes, the DNR, I'm glad you brought that up, they, it's a, we will allow seventy-five gallons per capita per, per day to be pumped out of that aquifer, so they do try to restrict it.
Okay, so you're limited in terms of quantity. Are you, but you're not as much in the Tunnel City Water Lock, right? I mean, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, the, probably the bigger challenge with the Tunnel City Water Lock is just the pumping capacity, you know, you typically can't pump more than five hundred gallons per minute out of that aquifer.
Mm-hmm.
Dude, versus the Mount Simon, you can pump over a thousand gallons a minute.
But that doesn't do you any good. You're limited to seventy.
Because you're limited to seventy-five gallons per capita.
Right.
Griff.
Okay.
And then the, the last option, which was option four, was to, uh, construct new wells and a water treatment plant. And so I'm looking at this slide, that's titled Option Four, New Wells Treatment. And the, the two sites, um, actually I'm going to go back to the previous, I'm sorry, I'm going to go back to Option Four, New Wells with Water Treatment. And it's kind of hard probably to tell from your handles there too, but we, we actually have looked at, uh, uh, five different sites. We looked at, uh, uh, four that were down in the undersressed area. Um, and, uh, and then the fifth site we looked at is actually on this property here. And, and the advantages of this, like Gary brought up, is that, uh, if you could loop water main up to the site, it would provide complete redundancy, you'd be able to pump water in multiple, you know, different directions, so if you have a major water main break, um, that plant can pump and, you know, can keep up with the supply. So even though there is additional costs to construct that water main, which you'll see, um, there is a benefit of the redundancy you get out of that.
But it's over two million dollars more.
It's over two million dollars more, right? Yep. So the next slide, I'm looking at, uh, Option Four, New Wells Treatment Dance. So the sites that we evaluated, the, the two sites we focused on, uh, first one was the, the Southwest Water Tower Site. You've got the property right there, it's, um, the advantages of that, uh, Southwest Water Tower Site is that it's, you've got twelve inch water main that's right there. You could pump right into with a, a water plant. And then you've got the operational, and operational security efficiencies because you've got the water tower and the water plant located on the same site there. Uh, the, the disadvantage is by putting a tower right there, it's probably, it's when, when that plant pumps into the system, it's going to want to fill that tower quicker than the other tower. And, uh, so we'd likely have to put an altitude valve in there, so when that tower gets full and shuts it off, pumps the other tower, but altitude valves are not really expensive.
What's really expensive?
Yeah.
What's really expensive?
Uh, less than seventy-five thousand dollars. Yeah, compared to millions of dollars, yeah. And then the other sites, uh, that we were, uh, recommending was, you know, the City Hall Site here. And again, it's located next to the existing public works, so it provides operational efficiencies with staff already being nearby on the site. Um, again, the disadvantage that would require two point six miles of water main to loop it to, to the south and the north. So that, that's where that additional two million dollars comes into play.
Two plus.
Two plus, yeah. So then the, the next slide I'm looking at is, uh, it's titled, uh, Package Water Filtration Water Plant Option. And there's some pictures in here, and unfortunately I can't show them on the projector here tonight, but, um, there are package gravity filtration systems that.
Mr. Johnson, could I ask, could you explain, so there's two different terminologies, there's water treatment and there's water filtration, just kind of for everybody's knowledge, can you kind of explain the difference and what we're currently doing maybe?
Yeah, so we're, we're looking at water filtration, dude, yeah, so it's, we're looking at, um, filtering on iron and manganese, that's the, that's the minerals that make your, your water.
And that's what our plants do?
That's, that's, yeah, that's what your plants do, correct.
Okay, so the treatment occurs at the wells, correctly? Correct? And then, so all the water is treated, fluoride, whatever, and then it goes into the plants to be filtered, is that correct?
That, that, that's correct for the remote wells.
Yeah.
That have a lot of, because the chemicals are actually there. But with the treatment plants, uh, no chemicals are added until the water gets inside it, inside the plants.
Okay.
And then you're, you know, you're adding, uh, chlorine, fluoride.
Right.
Fantastic, right?
Okay, thank you.
So with these package, uh, water filtration plants, these, these are, um, package systems where you have the, the whole process of aeration, uh, filtration, um, built into one system, which are these big steel filter systems, they can ship from the site on a semi-truck. And they can ship systems as big as, uh, that can treat up to one thousand gallons a minute, that's basically the capacity of your saltwater plant. And, uh, so we actually took staff down to the city of Montgomery, because I, I was involved in a, a solar plant down there back in two thousand and five, to give a tour of that plant, and I, the benefits of that type of system is that, um, they're real easy to expand, that, that Montgomery plant, there's actually an open space in the room where they can easily just push in a, a future filter system through the wall, to see, um, increase capacity in the future if you need them. And we think there would probably be at least a half million dollar savings, if not more, for that type of a system. So it's something that we recommend that, that, you know, the city consider.
I think we did that in the north system, in our north plant. It was expandable, at least, not maybe necessarily exactly like that, but.
Yeah. So then I'm looking at the slide, it's titled Opinion on Probable Cost at the top. And when you look at the options, so there's options three, and, uh, option three is to treat the existing wells three and four for iron and manganese, and the estimated costs range from approximately eight, eight point two million to eight point eight five million. And one thing, just to clarify on that table, you notice is that it talks about the difference in the water, the water plants, that also includes the cost of the wells and the transmission main, and the indirect cost, so it's a, this is the total cost. And then in comparison, you have options, uh, four A, which is to, uh, construct additional wells with treatment, that, that four A would be constructed at the Southwest Water Tower Sites. Those options range from ten point one to right around ten point seven million total cost. And then similar is option four B, the, construct additional wells with treatment, but that would be at, at the site, at the City Hall Police Department. And that, that's the most expensive option, that's, um, about twelve points, two seven million up to twelve point eight six. And it's mainly again because of the two point six miles of water main to get up to the site. And then the next slide we put together, our proposed schedule, if you look at all this, it is a lengthy process that you have to go through, uh, when you're constructing both wells and a water treatment plant. And the, the first step is to construct a test well, uh, which site you choose, uh, one of the wells can be constructed right on the site of the water plant that you choose, then we'd have to look at another, another site that's one maybe, that's within maybe a thousand and fifty feet, that we would pump to this water plant. And then at that point, once you, you get the data from the test well, you can proceed into the design of the production wells. And ideally, we like to, to do the pilot, the water fit pilot studies on those production wells if we can, uh, but it does take a little more time to do it that way. And then we also like to get the results of the pumping test from the new wells before we design the plant, because then we know of, of, you know, what, what horse powers mean for the pumps, the power supply. And so when you look through this entire process, including the DNR proposals, the proposals long ways, it's, it's almost a three-year process with this timeframe. Um, so on the next slide, what we did is we put together an alternate proposed schedule, which is more expedited. And with that one, we would actually do the pilot, the water treatment pilot studies using the test wells, instead of waiting for the production wells. And then we would also design the water treatment plant concurrently with the wells. But then we, during that process, we'd make assumptions on how big the, the pumps are going to be for the, the wells. And, and then directly the design, we could adjust, kind of adjust on the fly for whatever the changes may be. And we think with that expedited schedule, we could probably reduce the, the timeframe by at least five to six months. And then I've got a, a couple other slides in here, uh, looking at, there were some questions that came up on, you know, what if we were just to put, uh, treatment systems inside individual homes and businesses, or we call them whole house water treatment systems? And so we ran the numbers on that, and in the saltwater zone, there's approximately one thousand two hundred and fifty service connections. And if you're looking at a whole house system, that's a little different than the type that you put underneath your sink, that's just treating the water at that sink, you know, the whole house system typically goes down in your basement, it treats all the water that comes into your, into your house or business. So we did pull up provider, they estimated the cost of that system's about four thousand five hundred dollars, including installation. So if you take that, multiply that times, uh, the one thousand two hundred and fifty service connections, it's over five point six million dollars. But that's the, the least expensive part, the, the expensive part is the long-term maintenance. So this, um, company, I'll, I'll give it a sort of, it's called Good Water, um, they've got a maintenance plan where they charge forty-seven ninety-five per month to maintain these whole house systems. So if you take that per month times twelve months, times one thousand two hundred and fifty service connections, and then you take it over a twenty-year period, it's, uh, fourteen point three million dollars. And you add that to the, the capital cost of the systems, it's over twenty million dollars for that option. And that's just the cost, the, the greater concern, I think, from an engineering standpoint is that when you're, you're not treating the water at the source before it gets pumped in the system, it becomes a maintenance issue. And it is a fact that when you have more accumulated, like accumulated iron and manganese in your system, it affects your fire protection. You're going to get more fire flows, um, it requires staff to do a more thorough hydrant flushing program. Dude, uh, the other challenge is if you treat, let's say if you were to just treat your, continues in the saltwater treatment plant, and then you, you pumped, uh, wells directly into the system without filtration, you're getting a blended water source. So basically, the customers that live closest to the water plant, when it's running, they're going to get mostly filtered water. People that are living closer to these remote wells that are pumping from the system, they're going to get something less. And then they're going to depend more on a, on a whole treatment system to actually clean up their water. So if someone chooses not to put in that type of filtration system, they're going to get very low water quality across the system, depending on where they live. And with that, that includes my presentation, so, but a little bit of that for questions if you can, yeah.
Okay, I think what we'll do is allow, we'll start with some questions from the audience, and then we'll take it to, back to the council. So I'm sure you'll have to answer some. Steve?
Do I need to tell everybody who I am?
Yes, please.
My name is Steve Colios. I live in fifty-four fifteen Yellowstone Trail in Montrista. Anything else?
No, that's good.
I'm the mayor, council members. Regarding the WSB's water infrastructure detailed proposal, which is in your pack, I believe it's thirty-four pages, Mr. Johnson presented a condensed version of that. And I would just like to read some concerns that I have. The WSB proposal doesn't seem to have a capacity target. What is the target? Is this a long-term solution or just a patch? When will we have to address water infrastructure again? Section seven in this report proposes a new one million, or one thousand gallon per minute water treatment facility. Why is that the right capacity? The South Water Treatment Facility is only capable of operating at seventy-four percent, not a thousand gallons a minute, with seven hundred and forty, and that's on page six of this report. That, that water treatment facility was put online in February two thousand seventeen. The design capacity was a thousand gallons. However, it's only operating at seven forty. Why is that? The graph on page one eighty-one, or the last page in Mr. Johnson's presentation, has not been revised to reflect the shortfall and therefore is not accurate. Therefore, table three point two is not accurate. Therefore, the statement below table three point five...
Steve, I'm sorry, go back just a second. Do the, run, say that again. I'll give you a little more time. I'm, I'm trying to follow your question so we can...
I'll give you a copy of this if you want.
Okay, that'd be great, but...
But if you go to that graph, which is...
Okay, which one now?
Three point one.
Three point one, okay.
Three point one. It shows the South Water Treatment Facility operating at a thousand gallons a minute. However, it's not. It's only capable, for the reasons outlined on page six, that it's only operating at seventy-four percent, or seven hundred and forty gallons a minute. Now, that facility came online in February two thousand seventeen. The, the design capacity was a thousand gallons a minute. Why isn't it running at a thousand gallons a minute? Why was it accepted, approved, and I'm sure it was paid for? Somebody would have been complaining about that. So my point is that the graph three point one is not accurate. Table three point two in this larger presentation is therefore not accurate. Therefore, the statement below table three point five is not accurate. And based on figure three point one, we actually exceeded the capacity of the South Water Treatment Facility every year since it was completed, except two thousand nineteen. I don't know how that's possible. So what needs to be done to bring the South Water Treatment Facility up to the full design capacity? I think that's something that needs to be considered. Table five point one, what are the advantages of a steel package plant versus concrete? I understand they're less expensive, but is there a reduced life of the steel compared to the concrete, understanding that the steel does have some expansion opportunities and the concrete does not? Section four point one point two regarding option four A, and it's related to the South Water, the current South Water Treatment Facility. Is this going to be designed for proper back flushing to net a thousand gallons a minute? Because right now, because of other hydraulic constraints that are mentioned in page six of the full proposal, it can only operate at seven hundred and forty. So are we going to buy a thousand gallon a minute water treatment facility and only be able to operate it at seven hundred and forty because of other things? The construction schedule has a September twenty-four completion date, so are we looking at three more years of water infractions for the residents who are supplied their, their water by the South Treatment Facility? Is there an interim solution to provide adequate passive, adequate capacity until the new water treatment facility is operational? There wasn't one mentioned. Section six point O, the construction schedule takes a sequential approach. If we parallel path the process, we could shorten the timeline by my estimate, you know, due to Mr. Johnson's expertise by about a year, and he did consider that, so I appreciate that. The WSB proposal does not address water towers in any way, shape, or form, so does the capacity have to be considered in this as well? Or do we have enough capacity with the, with the additional five hundred thousand gallons that are going to be coming online later this year? One alternative that I think should have been considered is why not build a five hundred gallon per minute water treatment facility at the Jean Lainer Park site? That's well three. It's not contaminated with radium. It does have magnesium and iron, like the rest of the gophers. However, a five hundred gallon per minute plant could be built there, which is the capacity of that well. It could be operational faster and at a lower cost. And in my opinion, to accept this proposal would not be in the best interest of the Montrista taxpayers. I'd like these concerns submitted into the record, and I would appreciate a response from the city.
Thank you. And some of your questions, I'm, I'm sure some of us already have, so I'm sure they'll be answered. Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, those were some good points, good questions. I appreciate the details, looking at the report, and trying to address each, each one of these hopefully. I wrote it all down here.
You had to write fast.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, the first one on the, on the demand projections is that we typically go along, we, when we design a plant, we're looking at at least twenty years for designing and building facilities. So we're looking at the year two thousand forty projections, which were just recently done as part of your concrete plan. And the max day demand for that two thousand forty projection is about two point eight million gallons per day. So whatever treatment capacity we put on, we want to make sure we meet that. Getting back to the capacity of the saltwater plant is that you was right that right now the plant is limited to a hydraulic capacity of seven hundred and forty gallons a minute. We're looking into this with staff to find out, you know, what's, what's causing it. We have some good ideas. It's a plant that WSB was not involved with.
Right.
And, but we do have some ideas that we are, we've discussed with staff on preliminary phase here, just to see if we could increase it. Don't want to get into details of this meeting, but we think there are, there are some ways to increase the capacity of that plant.
Mr. Johnson, do you think it'll be close, almost, or at the thousand then?
I can speculate that until we actually get into the hydraulic calculations on that. What I can say is that we think you'd get more of it. Really, what I think the real limiting factor of that plant is that you're getting particle breakthrough of iron and magnesiums after about sixteen hours of runtime. So if you think on those max day demands we had this past summer, with that plant, we could run that plant up to sixteen hours until you get breakthrough. At that point, you have to backwash the filters. And so the option there would be to, you know, it's a really hot day, you might have to backwash twice in the same day to extend that runtime load. That's one issue, but the other issue is the hydraulic issue.
Right.
Get to look at ways to decrease the capacity. But the, the only goal is to get that plant up to about a million gallons a minute, so that this, you know, we're looking at this graph here. But, but the next slide on the advantages of the steel over concrete filters. Each one does have their advantages. Concrete filters are typically put in a place where to get over about two to three thousand gallons per minute, they become more economical. Below that capacity, steel filters are usually more economical. With that being said, there is maintenance on steel. You have to, you know, about every twenty to twenty-five years, you have to blast and paint them, just like a water tower. But currently, that saltwater plant, those filter dollars are steel filters. The only difference is the retention tank is concrete, and then you've got separate aerators up there. So what we're proposing is a package system, everything is combined. It takes up a smaller building footprint, and it reduces costs. And that Montgomery system that I showed pictures of, the Polar Point, that's been on one for sixteen years. And they've done, only maintenance is done on that is they're, just while we're down there, they're replacing nozzles on their radiator. That's the only maintenance they've done in sixteen years of that plant, so. But again, you know, we always try to balance the economics versus longevity, and that's, that's where there's a, a reason for doing steel, steel filter systems. Let's see your...
I think another question was capacity target.
Yeah, that's what capacity target is at, you know, again, we're looking at twenty years to the two thousand forty projections, which rules who want to hit that two point eight million gallons per day for the salt system. That's if we want to have enough treatment capacity. So whatever the council decides to do in the next step, you want to make sure, you know, use enough capacity to provide, to treat two point eight million gallons per day. And then in twenty years from now, you're probably going to look at this again, depending on how the city develops, so. The other question was on the, you know, three quarters of water restrictions. Let's keep our fingers crossed that we don't see a summer like we did this past summer with the drought conditions, but we never know. And so then if, you know, if that does happen again, the city's going to have to make some decisions on maybe turning on some of those remote wells, you know, where you're, you're still have treated water, but it's not all filtered at that point. And then you, you will be able to keep up with your, your supply, with your water demands. The other question on storage is that now with this new water tower that you put on there, you are going to have enough storage. So then the goal is to provide enough treatment, treatment capacity to meet your max day demands. So between treatment and storage, you'll be able to have enough storage for fire protection and just normal demands on a maximum day. And then the, the other question on, you could possibly build a five hundred DPM plant to just treat one of the... Three, but there is such a thing, because economy of scales, that if you build something that's five hundred versus a thousand, it's not half the price. It's probably three, you know, it's probably at least seventy-five percent of the price, you know, when you do that something. You have to decide if you want to build smaller plants that are more expensive on a cost per, a unit cost basis, or do you want to build bigger facilities to go on, you know, to meet your future projections? You certainly could treat three, but that is an option.
And then timeline. When I looked at the timeline too, I thought, that's pretty long, because I know we could do it faster.
It is pretty long. Things to consider is that, you know, you've got the, the process of growing a test well or well in a water plant, and every step is dependent on the results of the previous step. And, and then on top of it, you've got the DNR approval process.
Right.
And then when you get into the water treatment plant, it's, it's typically four months to construct a water plant, and that, that's not a whole construction. Probably you're going to have three to four months to review shop around some of those, get the contracts put together. But that three years is kind of a worst case scenario to put in there, but I think it's possible to get it down to two and a half years. And if we get really creative, maybe we get it down even a couple more months. But to, to do that whole timeline, less than two years, would be making a lot of assumptions that could be, that could affect the design at that point, because then you're kind of proceeding to the next step before you actually have the data from the previous step.
Well, one thing you were talking about is the pumps, and you were saying you can't design the plant until you know the capacity. Well, anyhow, I mean, then you said, well, you could put, design, you could design it and then change the pumps as you go forward. So to me, that's a no-brainer, that that's the path you would take.
You, you could, and that's a part of that expedited schedule.
Right, yeah.
The other one too, where you could save some time there.
Yeah.
To do a pin drive, I mean. The other important thing is, you know, whenever you design a plant, you're dependent on the results of a pilot study. And so you don't, you don't want to proceed into designing a plant until you've completed pilot studies.
Right.
To verify that the full scale treatment's going to work. So, but those are, those are good questions.
What I'm going to do is, anybody else have questions or comments? Please, just, you'll have to state your name and address.
Hi, my name is John Zuman, in the forty-four twenty-four Games Trail in Hunter's Crest. I guess I just want a couple of clarifications to make sure I heard you correctly, that that the expected improvement of the capacity would be two point eight million gallons per day with, with any of these proposed options? Okay, perfect. So I guess I just want to also ask the council, or maybe that's to you as well, assuming we have a similar dry summer like we did this summer, even with the new tower that we have going on in the south, it's still not going to protect us from potential water ban that we experienced this year. Is that correct, segment? So even with the, even with a, I spoke with some members here, I can't remember one of them, she said, even though we have another bathtub that we filled up to give us more pressure, that doesn't give us more capacity. So we still have that potential if we have another dry summer. Okay, just wanted to make sure I understood that. I guess the question I have with the council is, when considering future water bans, there was a significant amount of angst that was created amongst members in the Hunter's Crest, and how that created a little bit of pitting against one another. And what I'm wondering is, is that the best technique? Because you guys can't afford to have people policing when people are watering, and I guarantee you, there were winners and losers this year. You can go through my, my neighborhood, and you can say, that person, you can go look at my lawn, and so I definitely bought a water ban because I've got to replace the front lawn. And then you can go, some of my neighbors down the street, and they are lush, looking beautiful. So what I'm wondering is, is are there alternatives? And what I might suggest, and I hate to say this because I hate this consideration, but I'm just going to say it, put it on the owner by putting into a tiered system for, you use so much water, you pay a certain amount per gallon, and then when you go a little further, and then as you progressively get more, then they feel a pinch. Now, problem is...
We've already talked about that, so, yeah.
Then with that, I was asked, and I don't know if you're the right person to ask, if you're the right person to ask, I don't know how to really monitor my water consumption. I get my bill every quarter, and I find, well, that's what I used. And I'd love to be a more informed consumer. Are there, is there technology out there that I could have, such as pull up my app and say, yeah, I need to really start monitoring, because I don't want to get to that tier?
Yeah, that's a good point.
Those are my questions, and I'll let you guys...
That, no, that's, that's an excellent point. I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure. Greg, Allison, do you know if there's? I mean, that would really be helpful for people, I think.
A simple way to monitor your water usage would be to, on a typical day, go down, look at your water meter downstairs, right down here, starting, go through a typical day, look at your handy, to kind of give you an idea of what you have. Your sprinkler system, if you know that's going to run, you could do the same thing. Most sprinkler heads are going to be two gallons per minute flow rate. So if you have seven heads on one zone, you can do the calculations in twenty minutes, you can figure out how many gallons, you know, you're going to run a sprinkler system at.
So my question is, and this is not meant to be a gunpoint question, but how, how does the city know how much water we use?
Through your water meter. Your water meter, we have a remote reader on there.
Okay.
So what it does is, we can come through once a quarter, which we'll be doing this week. We drive through, it'll pick up, it'll send out a signal to us, and it'll tell us what that water meter's reading on that day.
Is there a technology I can tap into? Like, I, I mean, I, I mean, just like, I know someone's not coming into my house and checking, I'm just wondering, is there an app, or is there a technology that, so?
There might be, and we'd have to check on it, but there ha, it seems to me there would have to be, I mean, something.
Something to make us more informed to, like, we all don't want to go through what we went through. It would be more informed, then we could protect the water we use while, while still being in a potential, give our lungs just enough to keep them from doing what that, that's all I'm saying.
That's good.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah, there are some magnetic water meters that you can install on your copper plumbing down in your basement, that, that got a totalizer on it too. So you can keep track of that, it's easier way, you know, and there are ones that've got Wi-Fi capability to, where you probably could refer your phone.
And maybe that's something, that's the educational part, that we could get that information and share it with our residents. And we have briefly talked about changing our tiers to make it a little more prohibitive, if you will. And I think I'm also... And I think also educational wise, we just need to inform people, they don't have to water every day. You need about a half to an inch of water a week for your lawns. And then the other thing is if your lawn is in good health going into a drought, if you aerate and it's in good health going into a drought, usually it'll go dormant and then once the rain comes again, it'll come back to life. So again, a lot of it is educational and I think we're also gonna be looking at early on some type of watering restrictions rather than an all out, rather than allowing people to just all out water. And then all of a sudden, nothing. I think we'll be looking at that as well. So there's other things we've been looking at and talking about. So we'll, we'll be thinking about that too. And like today, obviously no problem, right? But, um, yeah, good comments. Anybody else have questions, comments?
Good evening. Excuse me, my name is Michael Young. I am a resident of Minnetonka. My, I'm Steve, next door neighbor, fifty-four twenty-five Dale Soon Trail. My question is related to Steve's second bullet point. The plant came online in February two thousand seventeen, it was only producing seven hundred forty. Who dropped the ball here? Why wasn't this ever addressed back when the plant came online? Is this negligence, I ask you as a Lord of the City? What about all these people who've lost landscaping, lawns? And I really disagree that lawns will come back. I think if you read up, I mean, go look at the entrance to Palmer Point. The only thing that's green in there is crabgrass. Everything else is just literally gone. That's gonna cost us money to replace and we may not even replace it simply because we may not have the water to keep it green. So, I mean, I, I'm really bothered by this, how something like this could have been dropped like this. You know, I'm a lawyer, I'm a general counsel for a company. And I'm, I'm really troubled by this. I think, I think the property owners have a cause of action against the city for this particular situation because of all this drop. Nobody did anything. It should have been addressed from the plant and still. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, so I'm gonna take it back to the council. Questions? I'm sure you have some.
Okay. Greg. If we would like to head off a ban, any kind of a water restriction ban or whatever for next summer. And again, we have no idea as far as rain, but we are on, I saw a map of the United States. Minnesota is on the tail end of what looks like the western drought, so it's possible. Um, tell me a little bit more about your thoughts on taking well three and that water treatment plant and could it be done by next summer? And then go ahead with the plans on drilling a new well at the new tower and a water treatment plant there. So.
Yeah, that, that could certainly be done. And it would, it would give you five hundred gallons for an additional capacity. To, I mean, that.
Is it gonna, is that gonna be enough?
Well, it's gonna, I mean, we could look at, we could do another trigger chart timeline to see how much more time it buys us, but, but maybe it would buy us another five to six years or something like that, you know, who knows? I'm just guessing.
Yeah, yeah.
To the point, but I think that'd be helpful.
Okay.
To the side. Um, that's something to consider, I guess. To, if anything, um, you know, if you did that and you decided to build the bigger water plant, let's say over by the water tower. You know, that additional five hundred, it should be farther into the future. So you're kind of setting up the next generation for treatment. I mean, that's something to consider too.
So Anne, you're saying five hundred by well three?
Yeah.
So you're gonna spend how many millions?
Well, no, no, I, I need to know that because basically the, the costs that are in here are for wells three and four. So if you split out the cost for just well three and the water treatment plant, that, that's gonna cost, I don't know what that cost is. So it, and he's, you said maybe seventy-five percent. So is that seventy-five percent of eight million? So is it six million?
Well, it actually would be less because that, that eight million includes running the transmission main from well four up to that water plant. So you didn't deduct the cost of that.
Take that out.
But if you just look at the treatment itself, you're probably looking at two thirds of seventy-five percent of the cost of a thousand U P M plant.
Two thirds of six million.
If that's what you have, yeah, then correct.
What's two thirds of six million? Somebody?
So just.
Thank you.
It would probably be more, it'd probably be a little more than that just based on the five hundred gallon facility we have in the north.
Yeah.
And that was around five million.
And then the, the, the south water tower with that, if we only drill one well and did a water plant there.
But how many water treatment plants do we want? We're already, we already have two, we need a third one and we only have nineteen hundred homes on city water. Honestly, I feel like nobody planned well when they built the one by me because it should have been bigger. You knew how many homes were going in there. You knew you were putting in Woodland Cove, plus the development's already there with Hunter's Crest. You knew you were gonna have all these homes and it seems like you built the smallest one possible and it can't even be expanded because you put it next to wetlands. How many do we want? I mean, we need one that's gonna grow with the city. It's gonna cost more. I mean, if you look back at what the big one that they originally thought of putting here for twenty million, with how much we're gonna spend.
The one for twenty million was fifteen hundred gallons and that's what we currently have. We have fifteen, we have a thousand in the south and five hundred in the north, so it would have been.
But one of them is in operating at capacity, so that's not what we have.
Well, but we're hearing Mr. Johnson say tonight that they're looking, none of us, this is a first that I heard, that it wasn't operating at capacity.
Right, but it might not be able to operate at capacity based on this report too.
Well, but when you build something, you expect that it's gonna be operating at a thousand gallons.
And nobody's checked for four years.
Well, I, I think it's been operating, I don't know.
Part, part of these, I don't wanna call it a discovery or whatever too, but some things that we noticed came along as a part of doing the study. To, so until we actually started digging into the capacity of that plant, that's what we're looking at, these possibly some deficiencies.
Right.
To, but it's, I don't think it's something staff was aware of because staff didn't really know what the capabilities of the plant were. I'm looking at it more from an engineer, but if you, to some, this is, I'm putting a different set of eyes on something that was part of the study.
And when, when the water system was designed, it was always designed with a third plant. A third tower and a third plant. It was always designed that way. And if you had built one system, you would have had to build it with expansion capacities as well. So the, the sizing would have been the same.
But you'd be able to expand when it's already there and not have to build another brand new one. Which I would assume expanding one is cheaper than building a brand new one.
Correct, if the plant's designed initially for expansion, it'll be cheaper typically than building a new one of that same capacity, yeah.
And we did do that in the north top, in the north one. We, we, we knew eventually we'd have to expand it. So we said, well, let's build the five hundred now with the possibility of expanding that one, which that's how it was designed. The south one, we said, we need more than a thousand. So rather than doing, and, and because of the location, we were limited. We said, well, it would be better than to build a third one like we are talking about today. So that was all looked at.
Do we always recommend, or I imagine it's for backup, do they always drill two wells usually?
Yes.
Is it for the failure possibility?
Exactly. Yeah, it's, it's really to have that redundancy. So, you know, if that well does go out. And, and wells do require maintenance on a regular basis. So you have to plan for those times when, you know, you might have, you're doing workout pumping and you're waiting for parts, thirty days for parts to come for that pump, you know, for example. To, so there are times like that. So you want to have that redundancy. That follows recommended ten state standards. Those are the, the standards that engineers use in Missouri too, so.
Is there a statute or not a statute, but is there some issue with how far the wells have to be apart?
Yeah, that's a good question. So it depends, it depends on the photographer. But I'll say your rule of thumb is probably fifteen hundred feet apart if you can. In, in most circumstances of a town city's photographers, you can be at least fifteen hundred apart. You'll have minimal interference with existing wells. Now, there are some cases where you've got really, um, wells with really high specific capacity where you can give wells within five hundred feet. But, but you don't get that on the tunnel city lot block formation. Tunnel city lot block is only be, um, you know, one of the lower capacity wells. It's just, that's what we have in Minnetonka. That's what we have to, to work with.
So if we're talking putting wells in by the new southwest and potentially putting a treatment plant there as well. One well would probably be right there, but the other one's going to be not on our city property?
Well, there were, I have to look at that now because there, there were, were four sites down at that Hunter Crest.
Oh, down in Crest.
Yeah, that we looked at for potential water plants, so, um, you know, there could be potential to either use one of those sites or acquire one of those sites. Those other sites that we're, we're looking at for a water plant, you can just go look at that other site.
John, that's actually in the full proposal that they put together. I, there's no page number, it's figure four point one.
And the, the site itself for a well isn't significant. Legally, you just have to maintain a fifty foot radius around the well. So you're looking at a site that's, you know, a hundred feet by a hundred feet.
So could you put two wells on the site that we have since we have three acres out there? Could you potentially put both wells on that same site?
Yeah, you cer, you certainly could and you could, as long as one well is, is only a backup to the other well. Meaning that that well will only run when the other one is not running. You could do that, but then, but then basically you're eliminating your firm capacity of five hundred gallons a minute. Versus if you had two wells that were separated, you could probably run both of them at the same time and, you know, do a thousand gallons a minute.
And separated by, you said a thousand feet?
Fifteen hundred feet.
Fifteen hundred feet, okay. Yeah, and that might mean you could just buy a, a small or, yeah, I mean, you wouldn't have to buy a whole park.
Yeah, it's a hundred by hundreds, you know, roughly, it's a quarter acre.
Yeah.
It's like a residential lot.
Right.
Yeah.
The approval process from the D N R fairly quick?
Well, it, it's not quick anymore. Yeah, they've, ever since the, we've had the Whitey Ray lawsuit, that, that's really changed everything and the review process of the, and that, that, that's again, that was coming forward in that schedule we put together is that there was some time that that takes and, um, you know, we, we think you've got justification to increase your appropriation permit and constructing wells down here. We just have to demonstrate that to the D N R, but, but it does, it does take some time to go through that process.
Can both the sites at the southwest water tower and at city hall, obviously the city hall one would be expanded, but the one at the southwest, we put it there, can be expanded?
Yeah, we're good at that. It looks like there's plenty of land there. So you could, you could certainly build a bigger building for more expansion there, yeah.
What's the max capacity you could put in one of these?
Well, I mean, if you, if you go with a, you know, that, those package type of units, those are, those can get up to about a thousand gallons a minute. Basically, that's as big as you could haul on a semi truck. And so, you know, you could, you could put those side by side. And then really the only limitation comes with how many wells you can drill in that area. Because there, there could be a point where you could provide all the treatment you wanted to, but then how far do you have to drill these wells away from that site? And then you, and then you get the cost of the transmission mains, you know, to get up there. So it's kind of a balancing act if you're in a site, so.
Let me ask you a question.
Yeah, hold on just a second, Steve, and yeah, I'll get, get you. Kathleen, will you?
No, yeah.
Okay, Steve.
So the proposal that was put together in the feasibility report for the four A, I think it is, at the southwest tower. Does that cost summary include an expandable building already built, ready to take on more treatment equipment inside of the?
That includes a cost of a one thousand U P M plant. So what we'd recommend is if you wanted to oversize it for the future, we could just build a building bigger, build off of it, a second filter to go in. Kind of like we did for the, the north plant.
Right.
Too, so, yeah.
So basically to answer your question is that figures are for a small, aren't for an expandable one. But you could also build it where you could build it and then ex, build it to the current size and then in twenty forty, whatever that date may be, expand the physical building too. I mean, there might be number of ways of doing that. Whereas the Gene Lehner Park or area is probably not expandable because of the, the space constraints. So that would be.
That's a narrow site.
It's very narrow.
That'd be a little more challenging there too.
Yeah.
The good thing about it, you know, if you size the, the building larger for future builders, that, that's a lot cheaper than everything else that's in the plant. So you can do those economically in most cases, it's just additional building costs.
Well, that might be an option.
And it's cutting out the, the power service for more pumps in the future, so.
Right, yep. Anne?
Yeah, I'm not hearing what I want to hear.
What, what you want to hear that it could be done next year?
Basically, we're not gonna wait three years to fix this problem. We're not gonna do that. And I, well, I need, I need to know a trade off between taking further steps that can happen in one to two years versus the long term. And I don't feel I've heard that tonight.
Well.
Go ahead. No, go ahead. Say, say, you can say something or you can, as far as say something that convinces me. I mean, we have a bunch of angry people and I'm sure the people here are only about a third of the angry people that are out there. So what are we going to do to actually solve the problem quickly?
So here's, just kind of to put it in perspective, I think this gentleman over here that spoke kind of nailed it on the head. The issue isn't that we don't have water capacity. The issue is that we have residents that are seriously overwatering. When you say they have lush green lawns, to me that says they're watering more frequently than they need to. So I think it's a combination, a combination of educating the public that, hey, don't waste the water. Water so you have your gardens, so that you have your lawns, but don't waste it. And there are a lot of people that overwater. That's number one. That would help some. Number two, I think what we talked about at one, some point, we said, rather than issuing a complete water ban after we realize whatever, it might be better to start out in the spring saying, look, we're gonna have some restrictions, but you're still gonna be able to water. I think that might help. So I think we should look at that. Those would be more the immediate things that we can do, okay? We can't get another well by next summer. We know that. And that's not because W S B is telling us that. That's because the D N R is saying that you have to go through these steps. They don't care if our residents' lawns die or their vegetation isn't lush, whatever. They don't care about that. They care about the water under the ground, okay? So we know that it's gonna take a while to get more wells online. Can we get more, can we do something with well three and four without, in, within, let's just say, a year? You know, maybe those are things that we could look at, but that still doesn't relieve the issue that we need another treatment plant. And eventually new wells because of, we know three and we know four have issues.
And that's the bigger picture.
Right.
I, I get that. And, and what you said in the, in the beginning where if there is a way to let people know exactly what water, because what we're hearing tonight is people don't know what the, I don't know what water I use, but I want a well. But they don't know what water you use and they're even on the city thing. So if we've got to find a way, it isn't a matter of educating people on that end, it's a matter of actually helping them monitor the water that they're using. See, that's, that's a first step.
Right.
Well, also I'd like to know, if plant in the south, right, Kings Point is only at seventy-six percent. And you feel that you have the answer to fixing it? How quickly could that be fixed? I mean, now you got twenty-four percent increase without us, well, obviously there's some cost involved, but we're not drilling wells. but we're not drilling wells, we're not asking the DNR, et cetera.
Yeah, we don't have an answer yet.
Oh.
But you will soon, right?
Yeah, yeah, certainly. It's something that, we've identified some things in looking at the current design to, or, and I'm not going to, I can't speculate anything at this point, because I'm just, otherwise I'm just pointing fingers until we totally vent it out. And, and I probably need to spend some time on that plant just to do some testing on it myself to, to see, you know, what the bottom racks are in it. But just looking at strictly just through hydraulic calculations, the way the plant's designed, it's tight. I, I can't, publicly, I can't speak more than that at this point.
But you feel confident that the plant can be fixed to go to its maximum capacity? What was deemed to be its maximum?
I can't say that I, I can get it, or we can get up to a thousand gallons a minute, but I think there's potential to increase it. I just don't know if it's nine hundred gallons a minute or eight seventy-five. We're just going to have to figure that out.
Is that something the council's interested in pushing?
Well, I, I think we need to. I took that as a given. Foregone conclusion.
You know, like I was saying earlier, too, there's really, I think there's two issues. There's the hydraulic capacity, but then there's the filtration capacity. Where, you know, currently you're limited to sixteen hours of filter runtime, even at that lower rate. So if we start pushing that plant at, let's say, nine hundred thousand gallons a minute, that fourteen hours might become twelve hours.
Twelve hours.
Or ten hours. So then staff are probably going to have to backwash those filters, probably foicy day, which takes more time, so.
Greg, are there, are there options of adding another filter to that plant?
That's something we looked at as part of the study. Just, just the way that plant is laid out, there is no additional space inside that building.
Okay.
And once you get outside the building, you're confined to the wetlands, go outside, and just the property. And so it looks like there are a few things.
A new plant, how would that work with the filters there, with the capacity? With needing multiple filters, would you just use one? How would that work versus what's going on at the South Plant?
I'm sorry, I wish I.
If you built, at the Kings Point plant, with the issue with needing to flush them every sixteen hours, what would happen in a new plant? Would we still flush them every sixteen hours, or with more capacity, you have to flush them more? Or is the technology better where we don't do that?
Well, you know, a lot of it comes down to your filter loading rate. And it gets back to.
Water quality.
The pilot study, that was on front, you know, I mean, we'd have to look at the original. What, what, what did they achieve during the pilot study? Did they, did they achieve? So when you look at loading rate, you're looking at how many gallons per minute you can treat per square foot of filter media. So, you know, that plant's a thousand gallons a minute. It's got, you know, roughly five hundred square feet of filter area. We'd have to go back and look at the pilot study. Did they actually pilot that? That loading rate, or was it something different? And then if they did pilot that rate, you know, why is the plant dying only getting sixteen hours? Those are some other things we have to look at, so.
I would assume too that it depends on the well and the water quality that's being pumped into those filters. I mean, it just makes sense that the more manganese and, and whatever else they're filtering out goes in there, you're going to load up those filters faster.
Yeah, I think, Gary would be right, especially, but I think both sixes are run pretty equally.
Correct.
For the most part, too, so. But yeah, that's true. If one well is higher in iron and manganese, you're loading those filters faster. And so you're going to reach, most cases, you could reach a terminal head loss where you get water that builds up, and then you do backwash. But this case is not terminal head loss, it's filter breakthrough. You're getting iron that's breaking through the bottom of the filter at sixteen hours. So then, those are the two conditions that would part of backwash. That's what we're seeing right now, so.
How do you prevent that in a new treatment plant?
Well, you'd either build the filters slightly larger for a lesser loading rate. So instead of two GPM, maybe you go a foot and a half per, or per foot. You can pilot using polymers, you know, some different chemicals during the pilot study. And, you know, and there's some other things that we can throw through, too. There's even, even biological filtration, you can get hydro loading filter rates. Cities of Minneapolis and St. Paul converted their plants to biological filters so they can, they get hydro loading filter rates out of those.
But can you, can you switch these to biological filters versus the current, I think, with green? What, what do we have in here?
These are conventional, conventional air and manganese plants.
Okay, so.
Yeah, too. Yeah, so there are plants, we just actually just recently converted, the City of Worthington's plant to its conventional plant. Then we just recently converted the biological filtration.
But even, even if you did that and it increased the filtration, let's just say then it increased to a thousand gallons, we're still only twenty-five percent higher than what we currently are, and we need more than that. So that might help a little, but maybe a little here and a little there would help. And, and the other thing I want to point out, this issue wasn't an issue until this summer, okay? I mean, this was not an issue until this summer. When you came on board in January, did you hear any of that? Did you hear any of that last fall? This issue is because of the drought. We didn't hear from residents that they were upset because of our water situation. It's because they couldn't water because of the ban. And we had to put the ban on because we had too many people watering, too much.
Mayor, Council, I know this hand is up, but I'd like to speak first. So I've been gathering some data that came from the National Weather Service, and it's interesting. And we also talked at a previous meeting about peaking factor, which is the, oh, I don't know, how much the ratio of water used in the summer versus the winter, which is your baseline, since nobody waters their lawn in Minnesota in the, in the winter. So Allison provided some preliminary information about peaking factors for neighboring cities. Chanhassen, two point five, Chaska, two point one eight, Mound, one point nine two, St. Bonny, two point one four, Victoria, two point seven. Minatrista, between 2014 and 2018 was three point oh three. And in '21, so far, it's been three point three. So that means our residents are using a lot of water. When I looked at the data provided by our utility billing records, I think with a little help from Allison, I think we figured out that there's forty percent of all our residents are exceeding the two point five percent peaking factor, which is what the DNR, I think it's two six, recommends that you not exceed. So that could be a complicating factor in trying to get a DNR certification for a new well in addition to the White Bear Lake scenario, as mentioned a little earlier. And then as far as information, climate information, directly from the National Weather Service, June, July, August, June, eighteen days in June, over eighty-six degrees temp, eleven of those eighteen over ninety. We had two point oh six inches of rain. In July, we had nineteen days of eighty-six plus temperature, ten of those nineteen were over ninety degrees. In August, nine days over eighty-six, and over four of those days over ninety degrees, and we had six point eight eight inches of rain. I also looked at the precipitation data for the months of June, July, August, going from 2021 back to 2010. That's twelve full years. Since we just completed August, I have full data. In June of 2021, as I mentioned earlier, we had two point oh six inches of rains. That's twelfth out of those twelve years. In July, we had point eight seven inches of rain. That is twelfth of those twelve years. And then with six point eight eight inches of rain in August, we're second out of the twelve, so high. But even the total, which is nine point eight one, we're still twelfth of those twelve years in this calendar year. So it was an extremely hot and dry summer. So I feel bad for this man and neighbors like him that stuck to the ban. I appreciate their compliance with this. I know there were cheaters. We had lots of calls in August about this guy's watering, that guy's watering, and how come you're not doing something about it? We had people calling and complaining about sod being laid. It's a difficult decision to have to put in a water ban and tell people in March and April, in a previous development a couple of years ago, that they're not getting their sod in fast enough. And then when the people want, developers want to put this aside, we got to tell them to stop. So kind of depends on what year it is, depending on how much rain you're getting. So it's a, it's a tough nut to crack. This year, we had the odd even system, which we banned for people watering. And then we came up with a new system in a fourteen-day cycle, since a week is seven days in odd number. In a fourteen-day cycle, you can water seven times during an odd even. We went to a modified watering, so Wednesday, Saturday, the odds watered, and Thursday, Sunday, the evens watered, or something like that. I forget which was odd, which was even. But that was four days of watering and three days where there's no watering at all. And we're finding out people use more water during the three days, or two days that they could water versus the three and a half or seven in a fourteen-week timeframe. People were watering, I heard from Kathleen, she told me about neighbors, they'd water in the morning and then they water in the evening. Well, if you do that two days, that's four times a week, that's eight times, instead of just the normal seven, if you just do the odd even. So either, either option was a bad option for this summer. Maybe we come up with something better. I don't know. Maybe you get the water once a week. Again, I feel bad for a guy like this who played by the rules and now his lawns burnt out. Don't know what to tell you, but I appreciate him complying with it. But it was a tough summer. I won't, these, these numbers are, like I said, these are right from the National Weather Service on temperatures and rainfall for the Twin Cities. Doesn't matter how many other cities had water in bans. We did. That's the way I chose to do it, because I appreciated the fact that our firefighters had to have a certain water level in order to fight fires. And then the boil-out order that you have to do if your tower level drops below ten feet in the tower was a real possibility this year when I got a call from Gary one morning and said the tower's down to ten point eight. This is not good. And that literally dropped from thirty-two feet down to almost eleven feet in about a eight or nine-hour time overnight when everybody flipped on their, their sprinklers. So people are using too much water in this community. We'd, we'd love to help people out, try to find a way, what's the right amount of water to put on your lawn so it doesn't completely die like we probably caused for a few residents this year. But, and I'm sure there's plenty who are out there maybe watering by hand, which you still can do, or just putting the sprinkler on at three in the morning so nobody can catch it, so. It's a tough nut to crack, but I think, as the mayor mentioned, this is an exception. If I do a thirteen-year average and average all this stuff next year, hopefully we're not thirteenth next year. Hopefully it's not that dry. But I kind of feel like this was pretty much an anomaly this year. Again, with what's going on in the world, maybe the norm in five years, I don't know. But for now, it's, it's, it's what we had to do this year. And I'm sorry that some of your lawns got ruined, but it's, we had to do it for public safety and, and for public health reasons, so.
It's going to cost us money, though.
I'm sure it is, but it cost us money to have to kind of ratchet up our plans to do this water treatment plant. When we put in the plan a number of years ago to build the next water treatment plant, as the mayor mentioned, we had a five to ten-year window. This is year five of that five to ten-year window. It's obviously because of this drought being exacerbated by your opinions about what we did wrong. I don't think we did anything wrong. We just happened to have a really dry year in a, in, in a, in this situation.
With all due respect, though, I don't think you've properly planned for all this massive growth in Brooklyn, Cole.
That's not true.
I don't think you have.
Well, that's your opinion, sir.
Well, yeah, I understand. You built a little dinky treatment facility and drags up to a wetland. You got everything.
Well, you, you'll have to bring that up with previous council members, if you can find them. But the idea was to build an economical water treatment plant, and that's what fit the bill back in the day, so.
The problem is that when you build something, you have to take into account the current users. And you have to say, okay, this is what the current users are going to have to pay. And what, what if, what if nobody else comes? So it's like, if you build it, will they come? Do you oversize it? You oversize it to a point, but you can't supersize it in hopes that you're going to have more people come and pay for it. So you, you, it's a, it's a balancing act. So what we did back in 2015 is we oversized it, anticipating growth, and it's adequate for the current growth. But when you have a summer like we had today, like this, this year, then you run into the water issue. Then you run into those issues. But for the city to have supersized the system to accommodate a potential like we had this year would have been ridiculously bad. I mean, it would have been a bad choice for the council to make. And so you have to, you have to plan for the future, and you have to plan, add in extra capacity, which was done. But then you have to ask yourself, how much extra capacity do you add in at what cost? That, those are things you have to balance. And the other thing that I don't think a lot of you realize is the city is under water restrictions itself. In other words, we are allocated a certain amount of gallons that we can pump out of our wells. We can't just pump any amount that we want just because people want it. We're under an allocation and we're under a permit. And that's what Mike was referring to. We have an issue when we need more wells and we go to the DNR and we say we need more wells, we need more capacity. What if they say no? Then what? And they might say no just because we're using so much water. Now, if we go back and we say, look, this is what we're going to do. We're going to educate our residents. We're going to put in a, a higher-tiered system. We're going to try and get an app. We're going to do these things so that we're not using the three point three amount that, where other cities are only using two point six. Then they might say, okay, you're growing. Now we'll give you a permit and we'll allow you to pump more water. But we have to look at that, when, if we pump more water than we're allocated, and it's by a lot, which right now it is, there's a cost to that. There's fines and fees to that. And I don't think you would appreciate it if we came back to you and said, oh, by the way, you weren't able to water, but guess what? You still have to pay, I mean, exorbitant fees because of the allocation that we've exceeded. So we're trying to balance need and resources, DNR over here, residents over here, and timelines here as well. And we're doing the best we can, but I, I think there's so many different facets that a lot of people don't realize that have to be considered. So right now, what I, what I'm hearing is I think we kind of need to take a two-pronged approach. One, more immediate things that we can do. Educate residents, increase our tiers so that they might, might not water so much. Look into an app for users to be able to use. Increase our capacity at the Kings Point Treatment Plant. Try and get it up to that one thousand gallons. I would also, I don't know if we need to look at the North Treatment Plant, but maybe not right now. But, and also, I'd like to see what, what possibly could be done with wells three and four. I'm not certain that anything could, but let's see what could happen there. Those would be, what I'm hearing from staff and engineers, those would be the things that are more immediate. The long term is we need to make a decision sooner than later regarding a water, future water treatment plant. And then see what we can do on that timeline. It's not going to probably be two years, but it might be two and a half. So. I, I, I don't know what else to do here, if you have better ideas.
That was a good summary. That was a good summary.
All right. And I think tonight, so the first part, the short-term solutions, I think we can start working on now. The long-term solutions, I think we need to make a decision tonight as to where we want to direct our engineers to go from here.
I want to hear from Gary on his thoughts between the locating it here versus where the new tower is.
When you say here, you're talking on the premises here. The reason we threw it out was, right now, our water ends at the Halsted Drive at one-ten and then at Highland and Wildwood. When we did have our line rupture a couple of years ago on Kings Point, and then we drained the tower, we lost all, anything in the central system went dry. So the only reason that we kind of threw this out there and had Greg kind of look at that as a cost-wise was to have, again, redundancy in the system. That way we'd be looping the water through. So if we ever did have anything happen on. So if we ever did have anything happen on that side again, or even on Highway Seven, which runs from the King's Point all the way to Highway Seven that goes into Hunter's Crest, if we get a break there, we could still feed, you know, through that area into that. You know, so that was one of the reasons we had that option there. Again, we can, it's it's more money. I mean, again, you have the water issue here that now you have water, which you could expand in other areas down the road, but as far as that's why that was thrown out there as a as a secondary option, so we don't run into that issue again.
Gary, are there other options if that were to happen again, other than spending an additional two million dollars?
Well, like we did before, we fired a backup well five, which you know, as soon as it went on service, I mean, we immediately got phone calls. The water is, you know, it is treated, it's not filtered, and it is not the best of water. So we are getting, you know, the iron and the manganese back out there. The polyphosphate can only handle so much. We're beyond that point, so we, you know, we had to do it. But unfortunately, you're gonna get that, you know, the gold water, the brown water complaints again because of the iron in the water. So I mean, same with well four. Well four is running back up now and that does the same exact thing, like we told Greg. You know, you're you're still pumping that unfiltered water and like you say, it's treated. Everything's, you know, the fluoride's there, the chlorine's there. Polyphosphate's added to try to sequester it, but it's too heavy. But you're also pumping some sediment in there. When we redid that well, we found out that it just keeps collapsing on itself and like we told Greg, you are kind of pumping some sediment into the system too, so. What's the best option? That's we we rely on them. We threw this out here because we already own the property. It's here. It would help the central system. That that's why we threw it out there. But for us, I mean, no matter where we go, it's gonna help. I mean, if we decided that the salt tower, that's where it goes, it'll help. If we decided gene linear, it'll help. I mean, we're just kind of at our wits' end for that, you know, so.
So let me throw a question out to the council. We had three site options. Let's at least eliminate one, okay? Take it down to two if possible. I mean, just for so here's, I think we'd kind of talked before about the gene linears, basically, we're gonna run into a small lot, I mean, a small area. It won't be expandable. Should it ever be expandable? I mean, there's maybe some good points, but then there's all those bad points. Are you, is anybody interested? And then and then I'll let you do that battle because I can tell you the residents around there are going to scream bloody murder and they're going to say, what, you're taking away our one and only city park that's within, you know, a mile or whatever, you know what I'm saying? So I think that's another battle we need to think about, but if you're really wanting to go down that route, the wish of the council will be followed, but I wouldn't highly recommend it. I would say, based on what we know today about our current system, and it would be nice if if the South Water Treatment Plant were expandable. I'd highly recommend either the South Water Treatment or here where it could be expanded. Because we're looking at another fifteen, twenty years, probably having to do it again.
You need to build one that can be expanded.
Yeah.
Because any new growth is gonna put a small on that.
Correct.
Doesn't make any sense. If you're gonna spend the money, build a big one.
I agree. I'd take it out. I went there just to look based on the study to familiarize myself and see where it would sit. It's in a very tight area, right in the middle of houses. To the north of it especially, down the grade there, a lot of trees go out. Takes that park atmosphere away.
I think it takes the park out.
Basically, it might eliminate having upgraded to the ADA, which we've been talking about, so.
solves that problem.
No, I wouldn't. I would. I wasn't giving that location consideration because of that.
Well, I'm also thinking in terms of time. It would be far faster because we have the property here and we have the, there's there's no discussion about that. It just seems like that would be a little, save a little bit of time and energy too.
The request to the DNR on wells, does that have to be specific as to where we propose putting them? Or is it a general request that we would like wells?
It needs it needs to be specific. You can still do a test well without a DNR approval. Because I mean, that'd be the first step to see if, you know, best on the test wall or see if it works for that site. And then if it does, then request DNR approval at that point.
Thank you.
So the only one of the issues with the South Water Treatment, the Southwest, I should say, location would be the wells being fifteen hundred feet apart. So really, the only good option would be to put that second well somewhere in Hunter's Crest. I mean, is that, so when you were recommending or saying that this might be an option, what were you thinking as to where that second well?
That's certainly an option where, you know, when we're looking at sites in Hunter Crest for a water plant, we can identify some sites on there. You know, maybe the one of those sites we're gonna put a well there.
No, I wasn't. Yeah, I was. I was. You know what? The other option is maybe staff notices, is there an option of putting it further west of our property that we don't own yet?
Sure. Yeah, the key thing is, you know, obviously you want to be in.
Not west, north, same north, because that there it's an agricultural lot.
Certainly, you know, as long as you're in city limits and you know, before you make a decision on the website, we'd probably want to just check the existing well logs in the area and look at the the data from the Minnesota Geolingu Survey, just to make sure that there's nothing funny out there. And we also look at databases for like leaky underground storage tanks, so to make sure there's no there's no potential contaminants that would be next to the well. And but that could be an option too, potentially, but we'd have to study it more further.
So and if it was here, would two new wells, city wells, affect property owners in this area for their private wells?
The one thing, you know, you do have some confining, you know, most of the residential wells are drilled into the upper drift formation.
Right.
And you do have a confining layer between the drift and the the diverted City Water Lock Formation. But with that being said, what we do commonly is when we do a test well rule, the bid form will specify that the well driller has to provide a number of level monitors that they have to install on residential wells. So then we'll, when we do that pump test on the test wall, we'll actually be monitoring what residential wells are on it, just to make sure it flows through those wells. And that's common. We can do that.
Because that might be a factor as well.
Yeah, the one thing.
Because what happens?
If your residents that volunteer to have the the pump taken out of their private well. But in my experience, most times you find some people that are willing to do that because they don't want to take a risk to have a well on their, their residential well.
Because there's a number of private wells right about here, not just one or two, so.
But but again, there are geologists. But with that being said, sometimes you can have upper and lower geologists that can interact with each other. So so if you put some data monitor monitors in those wells, you can you can find out what's doing.
Staff, then let me ask you, Greg and staff, what what are you looking for tonight? And what can be our next steps to move this along as quickly as possible?
If I, to give a recommendation, I would say to you know, if you're able to, to look at one of the sites that you want to further investigate with a test well. Do and then proceed to the test well. And if those come back favorable, then that'll take us to the next step, you know, potentially build a plant at that site. But again, we're talking thorough because we're, you know, it's two test wells that we want to. So I think we want to drill a test wall on one of the sites that you, you know, we recommended.
Okay.
And then if it's, you know, let's say if it's a Southwest site, for example, we want to look at a second site in that area to drill a second test well.
Okay.
Because we have two.
So then let me ask you, if you looked at a map, would you be able to look at, let's say, Lyle Park and do a test well there? I'm just thinking.
Would you go to Linden first? It's closer.
It's closer, but it's a smaller park.
Just a well.
Yeah, but how big? What do you need?
Yeah, you just see that.
Oh, okay. Okay. Okay.
Oh, sure. Okay.
It's really close to the water tower, so.
It's not far.
It it's probably I'd say it's between a thousand and maybe twelve hundred feet. I'm just gonna.
Oh, it's further than that. I would say at least a thousand. To Lind to Linden, it's probably twelve to fifteen hundred, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, to Linden.
I think you're right, because the scale is two thousand feet or so. Yeah, it's probably at least two thousand feet.
Okay. From the Southwest Water Tower Site.
Correct.
And it would be close to a water, a trunk water main because it's right off of Hunter's Crest, Hunter's Trail. So would that, I think, make so that might be an option. Plus, you don't have private wells to contend with there.
Correct. They're all in city water.
At least not within thousands of feet. Is that?
Potentially do up by the tower.
Right, you would do one by the tower, but then and you have two, you would have two people up there closer, like within fifteen hundred feet anyway, of private wells. There's one to the
Three.
West. There's three. Okay, there'd be three. Council, what is your pleasure? What are your thoughts? Go ahead.
I think the first thing we should do is just what I'd recommend is we check the databases in that area, just verify that there's no leaky contaminants, you know, in those areas.
There are none.
Okay.
I'm just kidding. Just check it out.
You know, then we can go back and just look at the local well locks in the area too, just to verify that. We're pretty confident that the Tunnel City Water Lock is there. We just want to verify that.
Okay.
And then and then once we can do that.
Which other one would be there? Would it be the Jordan? Because I'm thinking that Saint Bonnie, you know, they must have wells.
Yeah, there there's some parts of the Jordan one to get farther west, but they're mostly robed out.
Okay.
So, yeah, the Jordan is most likely not, actually. And then at that point, if those those things check out, then we could prefer request applications to drill test wells.
Okay, so you would be able to tell the areas and that, okay. Council, what is your pleasure? If we go down this path, we're kind of saying, unless the test wells are horrible, we're kind of saying we're looking at the Southwest Water Tower Site to put another plant. And the plant could be large enough or expandable for future, so that's a good thing. And we, yes, it doesn't give you your your looping, but it's also a little over two million dollars less.
Okay, sounds good.
Kathleen?
Can I ask?
What are your thoughts?
I I'm just trying to figure out what's the best location if the city grows anymore. I mean, you have a lot of farmland. Eventually, people are gonna want to sell it. What what makes more sense? It'd make more sense to put one here so it's more central than one on seven where there's not as much that they can build up more.
Well, there's there's quite a bit, actually, of farmland just to the north of Hunter's Crest. Not to the west, but to the north. There's probably, correct me if I'm wrong, and then there's also another fifty, sixty acres that are just west of ninety-two by Hunter's Crest. Is that? And that's high density, isn't it? So there's high density and we can maybe, well, it's too bad we don't have it here, but there's high density by Hunter's Crest on the east side of Hunter's Crest by ninety-two. And then there's a lot of vacant land, I think over eighty acres. I'm gonna guess hundred and sixty acres? If you take the Turk property and you take the property we just bought from, I think that was forty.
Two hundred acres.
Okay, okay. So there's acreage there to expand and then and when you look at our current comp plan, that's might be the next area that would then expand. Not to say there wouldn't be any other areas. There might be others as well, but any thoughts on that?
No, I mean, all good, all great points, all things I think the council should consider, and I think she makes a great point. Because you, you know, you look to the future. I don't know, Greg, if you could answer this, I thought of this earlier, but how many metro communities have just a centralized plant? There aren't very many, right? There's only about a handful. Just just to, you know, so for practicality, this is a common thing.
That's correct. I mean, if you get like, you know, Metta Taka, for example, they've got like over ten plants.
Right. And you know, Eden Prairie I live in, I know that that's got one, but there's not very many of those in the metro area, just for.
I mean, they built that plant in Eden Prairie. I lived there as well. There was five or six thousand people and they built a centralized water plant and they actually lime softened the water too, so.
Yeah.
They're kind of, now they're sixty-seven thousand, so it's a lot of water that goes through that one spot.
One thing to consider too is maybe to check the Crown College. I know they are maxed out. They have been, I know they were in communication with the city of Conia, thinking about expanding water. But eventually, I mean, there's another source of that income for us that maybe if they want to expand and we're there with water, you know, might be an option.
I think we talked to, back in the day, it's how many years ago that would have to be? It's got at least five, six years. We had mentioned something, talked with Crown College. Because we were still looking for a water tower site at that point. I don't think they were interested. That could be different now, but but there's a lot of issues because you're in another county. You know, I mean, there's a lot of monkey business that government entities kind of work with each other. Could happen, but I think.
They have an annexation plan with Carver County, Conia, so. Takes some doing.
Yeah.
I don't know if that helps.
How expensive is it to do a well test?
That, excuse me, that's in the table, I've had a report over here, it's actually an estimate. Doing two test wells, including the analysis is well, the test wells themselves, I'm doing two is forty, fifty thousand dollars per test well, which includes the test pumping. You know, that you're looking at probably another maybe twenty thousand dollars for right now, so we use a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for for two test wells in the report. Yeah, they're not cheap, but you know, you have to, you're you're going out of ways, you're you're test pumping it. You're you're testing that water for water quality, so there's also the cost of, you know, water quality, water quality analysis that's in there. There's a lot of stuff that goes into the test well.
Okay.
I I tend to agree with the approach of going with the Southwest Water Tower area. We designed the tower, we bought the property with the intentions of putting a treatment plant there. So I I think with that intention back then, I think this is probably our, would be our first priority or first option, in my opinion.
Any other comments, questions? Thoughts? I know it's getting late. But it's it's something you really have to, I mean, there's a lot of information and there's a lot of issues and that we have to consider, and so I appreciate all of your input and I appreciate your input too, Steve, and and those made by others here this evening that already left. So it looks like we're gonna go towards that that, the Southwest Water Tower. Well, that site will be right now unless the wells prove differently, then we'll have to take another look at it. But if if the wells pan out and that looks good, then we'll go with that. So what do you need tonight to get the ball rolling? Besides money?
I would say just authorization to do an initial research in those two sites, again, check the databases for potential contaminants that are provided there. Contaminations that are vital, there's, there's nothing there, and and also just to. Look at the existing well lines, the the geology in that area, just to, just to confirm that it's.
Okay.
Good site for the well, and and then at that point, um, we'd come back to maybe the next meeting. With our recommendation to, um, um, request locations for, uh, those two test wells.
Okay, so let me ask you, to do that legwork, to bring us back the information next time, what is that gonna cost? A- approximately, can we do a not to exceed, do you know?
I would say less than, um, eight thousand dollars.
Okay. Is that, um, so then let me ask staff, what would you need in order for, can we make a, um, motion and pass a resolution tonight? To authorize WSB to move forward with the, what would be called a, um, research?
I I just call it a, um, well site investigation.
A well site investigation, based on our discussions here tonight, uh, not to exceed eight thousand. And you can certainly come in much less.
Well, why don't we do this, I mean, I think you verbally, Mayor Council can do that, and we'll provide you with a. Uh, quick report and resolution, we'll include it in the packet on your consent agenda to approve at the next meeting. It'll summarize exactly what you just verbally said tonight, just.
And what I, what I'd like to do though is have them move forward so that they can bring back the results, so, and it'll just be a formality for the. Right, okay, so do I have a motion to that effect? Okay, thank you, Kathleen, do I have a second?
I'll second.
And Pam seconded that. Any further questions? Comments?
Yeah.
Okay, all those in favor signify with aye. Aye, all those opposed? Motion passes five oh, we're moving forward, okay, as fast as we can. All right, thank you, Greg, and we'll see you next, and we'll see you in.
Three weeks, two weeks?
Andrew.
Madam Mayor, just for clarification, there is a resolution in the packet, receiving the feasibility report, so I just wanna point that out.
Thank you, um, so. Um, I know Mr. De Colia said, do not accept this, we are not approving this, we are simply receiving this. So we've received it, we've reviewed it, we are not approving it, and I just wanna clarify that for counsel. So, um, we have it, we've received it, so to say we're not going to make a motion to receive it is rather redundant, I think, so. Let's just formalize it and say, um, is there a motion to receive this feasible, is it feasibility report?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Trumperlin, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. McGregor, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. Again, thank you for your time and your expertise, looking forward to. In a few weeks, thank you, Mr. McGregor staff. All right, I have to get back to my agenda, um. Just a few more items, uh. Next is a resignation of Mr. Barone. After tonight, I guess you might want.
This was in your packet last week, not tonight, so. Um, I'm gonna let Ms. Pofus go through that since, uh. Yeah, no, I I I can do it, so. I provided you with, uh, my resignation letter from, uh, last week. Um, as I mentioned in the, in the letter, my spouse, Jerrilyn, who was the city manager at the city of Minnetoka, just retired on September tenth. And had a nice send-off, and in the spirit of not letting her have all the fun in retirement. Um, we gameplan that so she could have her send-off, and then I would announce mine. I really wanna work. Here through the end of the year, I think I I listed December seventeenth, I wanna get the budget done with the people I've worked with, and kinda bring the. Twenty twenty-two budget across the finish line, so to speak, so, um. I'm gonna really miss working here, it's not me that I've changed my mind, but, uh, I'm gonna really miss working here, it's been a. Great eleven, almost twelve years now, uh, working here in both capacities that I've had, and, uh. I'm looking forward to retirement, so I'll be sixty-four, as I mentioned, uh, next March, and, uh. Got a son, my one son, he's getting married next year, uh, we've got a lot of things we'd like to to do in, uh, in our life, so. Um, I'm just entering a new phase, a little slower, um, more time with my wife, so. Um, again, I have mixed feelings, like I said, not enough to renege on this, but I, I, I think it's, uh, appropriate time for me to move on, so.
Well, before I hand this over to Ms. Pofus, I just would like to say, I've had the honor and the privilege of. Working with you over the past, um, seven years as mayor, and prior to that, um, as a council member. And I have greatly appreciate your service to our city. Um, and your, uh, willingness to work with the council and the mayor, regardless of, um, sometimes different opinions. But, um, I've, I've come, I've learned a lot from you in the last six years, um, I don't think I would have been. Um, as, as good a mayor, right, I'm good, right? Um, I think, um, you taught me a lot, and I, I'm sure that the council members that have served with you can say the same. And I appreciate your integrity and your, your service and dedication to our city, we really appreciate it, so.
I appreciate that, Mayor, and I'll have more farewell wishes to, uh, my staff here and the council when we get to our last meeting in December.
I'm sure.
Tonight, I just wanna at least, uh, just tell you my appreciation for the time I've spent here, it's been great, so.
Thank you, and the only other thing I'd like to, um, suggest to the council is that we direct staff. And that we have a brief discussion on the next step, because it is a big, uh, big position to fill. And I would highly recommend that we use a search firm, because our staff does not have the time, and I can tell you, it takes a lot of time. And it takes a lot of connections and know-how, um, I've done this. Three times now, just with the city, and, um, I've done it with other organizations as well. Um, I would not wish this on our staff solely, so, um. I think, um, again, with all of the other HR things that we have going on, I just simply don't see. And with the broadband and with the communications and all of the other tasks that, um, Ally has in front of her. I just don't see that she would have enough time to do it on her own, and I'd like to suggest that she bring back some options. Um, some information from companies, um, it, the process will take a while, it can take three to six months. Uh, probably more like the six months, so, um, that's why I would like to get started on it sooner than later. And so if Ally, if you could bring back some information and companies, um, some kind of dollar, I mean, just general dollar amounts.
They put together proposals, I I'll request proposals, um, at which would include a dollar amount timeline, all those sorts of things, and I can bring back. A handful, three to five.
Well, and I think, um, I would recommend that whomever we wanna go with, that we would at least. As a council, as a whole, interview, um, the team that would be helping us with this, because. Uh, we would, regardless of all the work they would do, we would still be very much involved in the whole process, so. We would wanna make sure that we have a good understanding and relationship with that, that search firm, so. Um, at at least initially bring back some information, and then we can decide on when and who we want to. Interview for the position, for the job, sounds good.
So this is interviewing a search firm?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, I think it's really important, because, like I said, we'll be working with them, and staff will be working with them too, and we wanna make. There'll be questions that you'll have.
It's pretty standard to interview.
Yeah, we'll wanna interview them.
And so in turn, they then go out into the world with our criteria, and. Come back with potential candidates, which we then interview again?
Yeah, we will, I I would, again, it, you can do it different ways, um, I've done it where. There's a, a search committee appointed by the council, my recommendation is that the co- the whole council be involved. Because this is an individual that y- you all are going to be working with directly, and, and. Really, the administrator is somebody you work with the most, and I think it's important that. Your opinions and your personalities and all of that are, are considered with the final decision. So I think, and we'll go through the process in terms of, um. How we're gonna conduct those interviews, how many interviewees you wanna see, um, and that's all things we can discuss with the search firm too. So. Good, good questions, all right, um, then we'll move on to the next one. What if we don't accept it?
See you later.
So is there then, um, a motion to accept, uh, Mr. Barone's, uh, retirement? Um, at effect of December seventeenth?
Thank you.
So moved.
Thank you, Kathleen, is there a second?
Second.
All right, Ms. McGregor, thank you, so a motion has been made and, um, seconded, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
No, okay, aye. Aye, um, motion passes five oh, all right, thank you, so, I told you we wouldn't accept it, but.
I tried not to.
Resolution, uh, numbers, uh, business item number G, it's award contract for the fence replacement and the court resurfacing at Jennings Cove Park. I'm sure we'll be very quick with this, right?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, Council, yes, I, we're really, I'll go really quick, this is phase two of the two-pronged approach to. Um, the reconstruction of the park there at Jennings Cove Park, um, phase one was, um, the playground, the equipment. Um, and getting that picked, so we knew what the design of the layout with a actual park would be for the container. This involves, um, all the other stuff that goes with it. This part is for the fence and the court rehabilitation at Jennings Park. The court itself, right now has a tile mesh on it, um, that is missing segments, it's full of debris, it's growing weeds. Um, we pulled a lot of it up, you can roll it up, it's not attached, there is a concrete base under there. And from what we determined, um, with Robert Slipka, who is the, um, senior landscape architect there at WSB, that's been helping us with this project. The the concrete looks great, um, we can take that tile surface off, we can have that surface pressure washed, and we can paint right on there as we do it. At the, all the other basketball courts, um, at, uh, and the tennis courts, both at, uh, Lyle, Linden. Um, Gene Lanier, and I believe Douglas Park has the other one, oh, and Mers Marsh, it's all painted on surfaces. Um, they're durable, they will have to be replaced every seven to ten years, but. Uh, last very short, we ended up getting some quotes for doing the, both the court resurfacing and the fence. Um, two for court resurfacing, three for fence quotes. Um, unfortunately, what we have there now is green fence. Um, we in-house are going to take care of repainting the post green. Um, but what, the information we found out was green will not be available till next year, but talking to the contractors. If we were to do, paint the post black, they'd get scratched up, the green would come through, now, Finley Brothers. Um, who do not have the cheapest quote, they do have a fence available that they took down at a local university. That is in great shape, they're willing to, um, give us a discount on that, use that fence, install a mid-rail on our fence to help strengthen it up. Um, and they will also take care of redoing all the posts that are out there now, instead of us doing in-house. Uh, which saves us a tremendous amount of time, um, also for the court servicing, they're a little bit more expensive, but they can get in here. The reason we wanna do this is when, uh, Mr. Slipka there at WSB talked to the contractors, they can get in next week to start already. Where the other ones, uh, court servicing and repair, they're not even certain that they can get out here this year to finish the job. So that was one of the reasons we wanted to get this on here, is that they can be here next week, granted, it is a little bit more money, it's, uh, gonna be. Um, four thousand one hundred and seventy dollars more than the low bids, but when you combine that with.
But Gary, is it low bids, or is it just quotes?
Or quote, I should say, sorry, the low quote, um, the overall with, if you add it into the. Second part of this, which will be coming up, which is the site work, which is a different contractor, we're still gonna be fourteen thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars lower than what. The expected estimated cost would be, we got great pricing, um, so what I'm asking, and this will be paid for out of the park CIP. So, uh, what we're recommending is, we're in a contract agreement with Finley Brothers, uh, for the repainting of the basketball court, the fence posts. The replacement of the fence mesh, and also the resurfacing of the court there for a total price of the fifteen thousand six hundred and seventy dollars. So open up to any questions.
Questions? And.
Sounds good.
Sounds good, okay, is there a motion then to award the contract for the fence replacement and court resurfacing at Jennings Cove Park to Finley Brothers in the amount of fifteen thousand? Six hundred and seventy dollars?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Trumperlin, is there a second?
Second.
And there was a second by Ms. McGregor, thank you. And all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, motion passes five oh, and next award the contract for the site work at Jennings Cove Park.
Correct, Madam Mayor, Council, this is the part two of the second phase, which will be doing the actual site work, which will just involve, um. To save costs, um, the city staff here, starting tomorrow, will be moving, removing a couple of trees, we'll also be, uh, removing the benches, the picnic table. The, uh, trash cans, we'll save those, all the wood back in, we'll also be removing the wood edging, the P rock and the. Um, trail right now that goes through there, plus the concrete pads, uh, saving about an estimate of about thirty-five thousand dollars of city cost. Uh, we can do that in-house, um, for the site work, with the rest of the work would be, uh, grading it down to the proper level, getting it set up for. The new container, uh, pouring that new container, installing the drain tile in there. Um, this company that, the Do Right, um, Contracting will also remove the playground equipment, which we were gonna do in-house. Um, and have to dispose of it, they are gonna do all that, including this price, um, with the three bids, they are the lowest, or the quote, we are the lowest quote at forty-four thousand five hundred. Um, again, when you add that into what we're paying for the Finley, uh, brothers for the other stuff, we're gonna, like I say, we're going to be. Under by fourteen thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars under the estimate, um, so for the site work, we're asking the staffs recommending a contract agreement with Do Right. Contracting, um, for the site work, uh, at Jennings Cove Park for the total price of forty-four thousand five hundred dollars.
Give me the name again.
Uh, Do Right Contracting.
Thank you, all right.
And both these contractors, just to let, to assure you, uh, both contractors have worked, uh, with. Um, Mr. Slipka at WSB on multiple projects, and he's very confident in both, there's, actually, all the contracts are very good, but just. It, the time constraints and that happen that they can all get in here at this time is perfect, so, as soon as we're done removing stuff, they're coming in the following week to start, which is great.
Okay, good, any questions? Otherwise, is there a motion to award the contract for the site work at Jennings Cove Park to Do Right Contracting in the amount of forty-four thousand five hundred? Okay, thank you, Ms. Smith, um, it's getting late, ref, can, thank you, is there a second?
I'll second.
And Ms. Mortensen seconded that, so all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes five oh, we'll move on to staff reports, Mr. Barone.
I was gonna show you a nice video of our tower ball going up.
Oh, don't all leave. Thank you, gentlemen, for coming.
But our technical difficulties kinda kiboshed that, so, sorry, I was gonna show, but I don't really have anything, Ally, did you have?
I promise I'll be quick. Um, so on Friday, City Clerk Chris Langquist submitted her letter of resignation effective October fourth, twenty twenty-one. Um, due to her ongoing health concerns, she won't be able to perform the essential duties of her job, so. Her formal acceptance will be on the next agenda, and staff will begin planning for the process of her replacement. And then, um, so we have Officer Jake Terrace will begin his first day September twenty-seventh. Uh, we're ready to have him on board, Mr. Cook will be right behind him, and we are beginning the, um, sergeant promotion process too, so.
Like I said, you've got a lot of HR on your plate, I know, all right, thank you, Ally, um, any other staff reports?
I need a person for planning commission.
That's the twenty-seven?
Correct.
I think.
Oh, I'm gonna be there.
Oh, you're gonna be there? Oh, okay.
Cause my property is one of the properties that's changing, being rezoned, that's the same, it's the same thing.
Well, that's an informational meeting, you're probably within five hundred feet, I think, I don't think your property, or is yours?
No, I'm in there. My property's in your, on your map.
Okay.
It's that, it's the whole area that's.
Right, the stage development's changing from, I mean, it's, it's, it's not.
Nothing's changing, it's just.
Changing, really, but technically we're following the process, it means nothing, really, but whatever.
I tried telling my husband, he said, no, you better be there. Oh, there you go.
Well, do you wanna be the council liaison then, okay, since you have to be there anyway. Okay, all right, any other staff reports? Okay, I'll go real quick, um, so tomorrow morning, Mike and I will be at the public, and Chief Falls will be at a public safety committee, meeting, and, and then, um, this also relates to our new water tower and plant and everything. I would like to do a, um, ribbon cutting for our new water tower, it's been in the works for over two years, so I think
Date to be determined.
And date to be determined, I'd like it to be maybe no later than the end of October, very, very beginning of November, because it gets cold and I don't think we wanna stand out there in, in the snow, so, um, kinda keep your eyes and ears open for that. I was thinking, um, it would be interesting, especially for those that have never done this before, to do the same either right before or right after, um, a water, a tour of our water plant, of our water treatment plant. Um, I know a lot of questions came up tonight, I think it would be really helpful, and then for those of us that have seen one already, maybe get refreshed, and then we can also look at the issues, I was thinking the South Water Treatment Plant, we can see the, it maybe be shown what the issues are or shown what we're talking about, because, you know, we're talking about filters and we're talking about backwashing and all this stuff. I think it might be real helpful and good for all of us to see, so, um, if you, so staff will send out, hopefully, a, um.
Well, I mean, I talked with Gary this afternoon, we talked about it this morning.
An email with some dates and, we were, you know, let's say dates, and then hopefully all of us can attend, so.
Combo that up with the ribbon cutting.
Right, with ribbon cutting and then the tour or vice versa, okay, that's all I have.
Um, I attended the Parks Committee meeting on September fourteenth, and, uh, the, uh, items that we voted on were in our consent agenda tonight. Um, also I did my, uh, WCC meeting on the sixteenth, and it was interesting, because, uh, the city mound presented, uh, uh, what they'd like to do for the Harbor District Park Improvement Plan, and they're really trying to get the residents and people uh, throughout the area, not just mound, but other areas, to, uh, their, uh, give their opinions on what they would like to see in this area. And so they're providing like three concepts, and you're supposed to go onto the website and just kind of put on there your opinion. So if anybody's interested, I've got the website information, if you wanna hop on there, uh, it looks really interesting, so, I haven't done it yet, but I will do that, so. Uh, and that's it.
Uh, attended two meetings at Pioneer Sierra Creek since our last meeting, August and September. Uh, biggest thing in there that affects me and our, the city is we, the commission has decided we're gonna keep our meetings virtual for the time being, even though we do still have access to the Maple Plain site, uh, consensus was to stay virtual.
Makes it easier.
That's the way I take it. And there was no issue with needing to have a camera, which I don't, so, they don't have to look at my pretty face, so. And Mr. Baker doesn't like my Packer jokes anymore.
But you can still make those.
I attended the planning commission at the end of August, the, the two items that were on there were in our consent agenda. In that, the cup amendment for Buddy Boy, main discussion in there was noise, as you would expect, and the, uh, issue with the hours, while the, uh, the hours were pulled eventually in that if he ever wanted to expand his hours, then it wouldn't dictate another amendment to the cup. So that was the reason it was pulled, even though he was here tonight, he had no intent on expanding his hours because of his workload already. And then there was the, uh, the pod, the preliminary plat for the tree combs at Lotus Drive. The main discussion there was, there will be a city easement on Lot Three, which is the most northern one. That drops downhill sharply into a gully, and so the city would put an easement on it just to ensure that there isn't probably any construction that would ever take place on it. And the discussion was how many feet, how big, you know, the size, and that was left up to the discretion of our legal department as to what that would fit. And I attended the Lyle Park Shelter dedication in August, and it was raining in the morning, but the afternoon turned out real nice, so, and there were some people there, it was, it was nice.
I forgot about that, yeah. Okay, I attended the Gillespie Board Meeting, uh, September ninth, and, um, the president, very diplomatically, has talked to her staff and she's gonna follow your advice. And she's put, they're putting together a really good budget to really track income expenses and start to put more real boundaries around how they spend money and what, how they plan, and how to make more money by looking, um, over the entire big picture of projects. Their biggest push is for their, um, twentieth anniversary celebration, which is October fifteenth. It's gonna be a Friday night with an Italian dinner, jazz band program, silent auction. Uh, tickets are gonna be forty-five dollars a person, and then that Saturday, October sixteenth, is a family fun day uh, with things for kids, food and, and, um, lots of other activities going on. And they want from the city of Minatrista, they want some sort of a display that gives a little bit about the history of Minatrista to, with that Forgot about that. that day, I believe, and then they want, uh, the mayor to speak, so.
The mayor to speak?
Yeah, they do.
Oh dear. Okay. That's all, I don't have anything to report.
All right, I think we're done then. But we can sit here. Or we could adjourn, is there a motion to adjourn?
Okay, motion to adjourn.
Thanks, is there a second?
Second.
Who seconded?
Me.
Kathleen, so Anne made the motion, Kathleen seconded, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.